Okay, we're ready?
Okay, I just want to make sure you heard before I made an announcement.
City Attorney, sit down.
Right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to call the Avalon City Council meeting of October 15th to order. We also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Avalon Housing Authority. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And if we may please have a few moments of silence for Chris O'Hannon and Kelly Whitaker, who have passed in the last couple of weeks. Please be seated. And if we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Haves.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall. Here.
Mayor, this evening, we have a presentation from Southern California Edison, and I'd also like it noted that we are going to take out of order with your permission, the Avalon Housing Authority. We have Elizabeth Hole here from BB&amp;K that will do her presentation to us, and then we might as well do both items in the Housing Authority. So first off, we have Southern California Edison.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. Thank you for allowing us the time to share some information about what we do with regards to wildfire prevention. So I have here two of my colleagues with me. Bob Steens is our Senior Advisor, who is a subject matter expert on wildfire. And then I have Josh Bergalado, who is the District Manager, and he oversees all of the electrical services here on the island. And with that, Bob is going to provide the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, thank you, Adeline, and Mayor, Members of the City Councils. Adeline, mention my name is Bob Steens, one of Adeline's colleagues in our local public affairs group, and I, for the last two years or so, pretty much been full-time on wildfire, public safety power shut-off, and those initiatives that the company is doing. So what I want to do tonight is give you an overview of what we're doing as far as wildfire mitigation, discuss the, what we call the public safety power shut-off, and then happy to answer any questions you may have. So, you know, those of us who grew up in Southern California, remember we used to have what was called a wildfire season. Former Chief would probably correct me, it was probably August-ish to November-ish or so, you know, it was wildfire season. That's no longer the case. We're now in a 12-month fire season. If you look at some of the most destructive fires that have happened in the history of the state, they've happened in November, December, January over the last few years. So we can debate, we can debate what the cause of that is, but there's no doubt that we're having more, more fires, more large fires, and not only that, but they just grow very, very fast now because of the dry fuel conditions, bark beetle and the drought. It's really bad. So as a result of that, I mean, Southern California Edison and the other utilities have always been very proactive on some of our wildfire mitigation practices, but just as a result of what's gone on the last few years with these more frequent, bigger fires, we've put a lot of effort and putting a lot of resources into what we call our wildfire mitigation plan, which I'll talk about. So, no surprise here, the last year, California Public Utilities Commission looked through the state and developed what they call Tier Two and Tier Three fire areas. You know, with the exception of the City of Avalon, and I think it's the quarry at the end of the island, all of this island of Catalina is in what's called a Tier Three, which is the highest fire risk area as identified by the State Public Utilities Commission. And they did these, put these maps together in consultation with CAL FIRE, Local Fire, US Forest Service, and other services. And that, as a result of this, the island being in the Tier Three fire area, or even it was in a Tier Two, it is potentially subject to what I'll talk about later, the public safety power shut-off. So I do want to talk about, you know, we're not, although this wildfire effort is a very big focus for the company, probably the top focus, we are still keeping our eyes on and keeping focused on building a more cleaner grid, a carbon-free, as much of a carbon-free grid as we can, because in the long run, though not immediate, you know, the more we can do to help reduce the effects of climate change, you know, that does help mitigate fire, you know, potential for fire in the very long run, but it's something we're very committed to doing. So, you know, very quickly, over the last year and a half, the state has done a lot of action on the wildfire front. It started, actually, yeah, last year, when the state passed SB 9, what's called SB 901, and that started the framework for what the investor-owned utilities need to do, us, San Diego, PG&E, need to do as far as wildfire mitigation. It prescribed some actions we have to take. It required us to file an annual wildfire mitigation plan, which I'll talk about. And then there were subsequent actions that the Governor took as far as task force, the wildfire commission came up with some good recommendations. And then July of this year, the Governor signed in some legislation. It does a couple of things. One, it helps for residents that set up a fund for those, for catastrophic wildfires, for being able to access funds for damage to houses and property. And it also sets some regulatory stuff, framework, for utilities on how we recover costs. So it sets up some standards that we need to follow if we want to be able to recover costs. So as I mentioned, we have filed later this year, what's called our wildfire mitigation plan, something we do every three years, excuse me, every year now, and that had three major parts, which I'll talk about: bolstering our situational awareness, enhancing operational practices, and hardening the grid. But before I get to that, I want to go back to, you know, I don't remember if this was elementary school, junior high school, Boy Scouts, or something, but, you know, there's the fire triangle, and there's three parts of that fire triangle that, and you need all three parts of that fire triangle for a fire to start and burn. You need oxygen, you need fuel, and you need heat. So Edison, we can't do anything about the oxygen. We can't make it, the wind stop blowing, or anything like that, but what we can address, and what this wildfire mitigation plan does address, is the other two sides of that triangle: fuel through our vegetation management, so if we can reduce the chances of brush and trees blowing into our lines, again, that helps eliminate that side of the triangle; and heat, and when I talk about heat, I'm not talking about the weather, I'm talking about the heat from our electrical system. So many of the actions we're taking are designed to help reduce or eliminate that side of the triangle. If you look statewide, about 10% of the fires in California are caused by utilities, but we want to drive that down to close to zero or zero as possible, which is the goal of our program. So I want to start off with inspections. You know, all of our equipment is, that is on a regular inspection cycle, and some pieces of equipment are inspected every year, some are every five years, depends on the type of equipment, on where it's located. Well, we made the decision late last year that that wasn't good enough. So we made the decision in over five months, inspected every piece of equipment that we have that's in a high-fire-risk area. And for us, that's about a quarter of our service territory. So in the period of five months, we inspected 400,000 pieces of equipment from the ground, and anything that we noted that needed to be fixed, it either, depending on the severity and where it was, got fixed immediately, or got put on a list to work, some of the less serious ones. And now we're going through, we're probably about two, maybe three months into this process, of doing all those inspections by air, too, because it's good to, you know, you can drive down, look at a power pole, and look up a line, and it may look good, but when you fly over it, you might find other issues that need to be fixed. So we're doing a combination of helicopters and drones flying that equipment. So high-tech cameras. And at the end of this presentation, I've got websites where you can see this, but we've installed, and I'm losing my count because it's going so fast, probably about 130 fire, high-tech, high-definition fire cameras throughout our service territory. And we're working, and we've got two locations on the island here. And what these do is, they don't detect fires necessarily, but they're more of a confirmation device, so that when there's a report of a fire, we can get on and log on and look at it, as can fire departments. This is all hooked up to a program that's run by UC San Diego. San Diego Gas and Electric started this program, and we've added to it. PG&E is also part of this program. And what these cameras have the ability to do is, when a fire is spotted, we can aim the cameras at that, or the fire department can aim the cameras at that, at where the fire is, and it gives them help, gives them the intelligence of where is, you know, location of the fire, exactly where is it, which direction is it moving, how fast is it spreading, so it can help them with the deployment of resources. We started off this program in April of last year with our first camera. That was up in Santiago Peak in Orange County, and it actually helped detect the holy fire that was in Orange County and Riverside County. So this is a really good tool. We expect to have by 2020, 160 cameras up, and that'll give us coverage over 90% of our service territory. So weather stations. The weather stations are very important for us when we get into talking about the public safety power shut-off. And I'll talk about that. I have lost count of our installations, but I think we're up to over 450 of those. And again, April of last year, we had zero of those. We don't have any on the island right now, but we're in the process of identifying locations. We're working with county and, I believe, city fire to help identify where those, the best spots for those locations. We've got three or four locations in mind, but we want to get some confirmation on that. But there are other publicly available weather stations on the island that we use to monitor weather conditions. So this, all this weather stuff gets fed into some really sophisticated stuff that's way beyond my brainpower to understand how it all comes together, but it's looking at what are the fuel conditions, what are the dry fuel conditions, what are the live fuel conditions? Because obviously, that's, you know, very important in making a decision on potential public safety power shut-off. What is the, what's the humidity, and obviously, what are the wind factors? And what these weather stations give is, oh, I'm sorry, and all this gets fed into a computer system we use, we've got a couple of supercomputers we use, and produces what we call a fire potential index that helps us identify on a circuit-by-circuit, and we have about 1,100 circuits in our service territory, what is the fire potential for each one of those circuits? And depending on the scoring, you know, it goes on our, sort of our watch list for a public safety power shut-off, and we begin our whole action plan, which I'll talk about. And we have 24/7 monitoring on that. We have a staff of meteorologists, and we have fire scientists onboard, too, that help us analyze all this and make our predictions and our assessments. So that's the, sort of the science part of what we're doing. We're in the process of, it's going to take us several years to do, but in the higher-risk areas, not just the high-fire areas, but in the higher-risk areas, and there's lots of complicated mathematics and analytics that go into deciding, you know, what are those highest-risk areas? So we're replacing, you know, right now, all our wire is just bare metal wire. We're going through the process of, in those higher-risk areas, replacing it with what we call covered conductor. I should have brought a piece over with me. But it's the wire, but it's got a, it's got a plastic-type coating on it, so if that's, if a tree branch blows across two of those lines, it can't conduct electricity and start a fire. So we've got a couple, we've got, yeah, we're going to have 600 miles of this installed by the end of 2020, and our goal is to get up to 5,000 miles by the end of 2025. It's going to take us a while to ramp up, because you got to get a lot of, you need extra crews, you need to train the crews, and also you need to go out and find vendors that are, that are making this cable. This is all a fairly new technology, with some of the stuff I'm going to be talking about with the covered conductor, the, this really good quality covered conductor. The other thing we're talking about, we're doing, installing is fast-acting fuses, reclosures. And a fast-acting fuse is like the circuit breaker in your house. When it detects a fault, it'll, you know, flip off, and you got to go figure out what the heck happened, and, you know, trip it back on, and hopefully it goes back on. If not, you got to, you know, figure out what happened. So those, we've always had fuses on our system, but we're in the process, and we've completed most of it, about 7,000, yeah, 7,500 fuses, and they act now much, much quicker. So if that, if that, if it detects a fault, the older ones took a little bit of time to trip off. These new ones will trip off just instantaneously. So again, if it detects a fault, it will shut off immediately. And then if we get in, and if we're in a situation where it's like today, it's not what we call an elevated fire day here, what would happen then if it detected that fault, or if these reclosures would detect a fault? It would, we test it, and if it tests clear, we re-energize. If we're in that same situation when it's an elevated fire situation and it trips off, we don't automatically, we take it off so it doesn't automatically re-energize, we want to go out and patrol that line to make sure, especially since we're in a chance of a fire starting, to make sure there's no damage to the line, or there's no tree branches, vegetation that have blown into the lines. We're also in the process of installing what we call reclosures, and those give us the ability to isolate when we get into public safety power shut-off, to maybe move load around to other circuits, or to, as I'll talk about, is to keep power on to the Avalon area while we might shut it off to the, to the more remote areas. So vegetation management is a big project for us. And then before I started doing this wildfire stuff a couple of years ago, I had no idea of the scope of our vegetation management program, and it's grown pretty rapidly. So we have 20 in-house certified arborists. We have almost 1,000 workers on contract to us to go out and observe the vegetation and then go out and trim it back. We are in the process of expanding what we call our clearance zone. The California Public Utilities Commission requires us to trim to four feet plus one year's growth, but they've, but their recommendation is 12 feet in high-fire hazard areas. So we're going through and adopting that. And as you can imagine, it's a little controversial in some areas, but for the most part, you know, people, people understand why we're going to do it, and we work with the home, we work, do our best job to work with those property owners. Another, and we inspect almost 900,000 trees a year throughout our service territory, prune about 700,000 of those trees. One of the newer programs we have this year is our Hazard Tree Removal Program, where we might find a tree that's outside of our right-of-way or outside of our zone, but we can see, you know, there's a 30-foot tree 15 feet away from the lines, or 20 feet away from the line, so it's not something we would automatically clear, but we can see it's dead or dying, and if it does die, or it gets weak, it could blow into our lines. So we'll go through in that situation and work with the property owners, and we'll go out and remove that tree at no cost to the property owner. So undergrounding. Okay, this is a question I get every City Council meeting, every public meeting, but every time I go out and talk about this, why don't you just underground the lines? So there's benefits and disadvantages to undergrounding. One of the benefits is, it does reduce, you know, the wildfire risk, but so does our covered conductor, which is why we're so big on that. Another advantage is, there are less frequent outages. If it's, you know, the squirrel can't climb into it, the metallic balloon can't climb into it, the tree branch can't climb, fly into it if it's underground. But then the other advantage is aesthetics. I mean, everyone wants to look out and see the ocean and the hills, so those are the advantages. And then there are also some disadvantages. I talked about the less frequent interruptions or outages, but the problem is, when they do happen, they take a lot longer to fix, because, you know, someone, Josh, is troubling, can't just get out and drive the line, say, oop, there's the problem. A lot of times, they get, I have to get into the vaults, open the vaults, find out what happens, and then when they do find the problem, they may have to dig up a street to make the repair. So it does take longer to fix a problem when it happens. Another disadvantage is, it takes a lot longer to design and do the engineering and construct an underground line. For example, when, after the fire in Malibu last year, we were able to replace 95% of the line that burned down with that covered conductor, and we had it up in weeks. If we had undergrounded that line, we'd still be designing it and doing the engineering work on it. And the other disadvantage of that is the cost. And when I talk about cost, I'm talking about cost to ratepayers. It costs us about $3 million a mile to do undergrounding, and in a, and in, you know, in an area like Catalina, it's probably higher, because you have the hills, which is another more difficult part about doing the underground. So it's about $3 million a mile to underground a line versus $430,000 a mile to put that line, replace that line with a covered conductor. So we're doing a lot of work with our state and local agencies. Again, we've, this has been something we do for a long time. We're very closely aligned with our fire, local fire departments. We have three in-house fire management specialists, whose job it is to, during a fire, they go out and embed themselves with the incident command team, the fire departments, or the, with the incident, the unified command. And then they also, during, during the non-fire season, they're out doing training of fire departments on electric safety, training them how to treat it, if they see a down wire, what to do. We're also doing, we also are very involved with our county offices of emergency services. That's one of the things I do, is we meet with them on a regular basis to make sure that this public safety, they understand this public safety power shut-off, and then we're always constantly meeting with them on how we can improve our process and how we can coordinate our process. And we also, this year, funded a, helped fund a helicopter. It's stationed in Orange County, but it's for use for the southern, the southern command area. And one of the unique things about this helicopter, it's one of the few helicopters in the state that can do nighttime water drops. So most helicopters are limited to flying, and a lot of the fixed-wing aircraft are limited to flying during the day. This helicopter can fly at night, and it's been used in several fires recently in Southern California. So working with our communities, this is, this is a big project for us. It's something I spend a lot of time doing, traveling throughout our service territory. I think last week, we did our 33rd community meeting, and this has been from every part of our service territory, from farthest south in Orange County, to up to Mammoth Lakes, from, from the desert to Malibu, Ventura, Santa Barbara. So we think it's really important in the, in the more heavily populated areas that are impacted by PS/PS or wildfire, to get out, explain what our program is, have them a chance to ask questions. We bring in probably about 10 to 15 subject matter experts and station them around the room, and we don't leave until the last, last question is asked. We've met with every city in our, it's in a high-fire-risk area, explaining, going over this with them, and done presentations like this to city councils, participated in a statewide advertising campaign about public safety power shut-off, and I'm going to probably forget, I almost forgot to do this. One of the key things to do is for customers to go on our website, there's a link in here, but you can also go to sce.com/psps, and make sure we have your updated contact information. And I'll go over in a little bit why that's so important. And that was a big part of the statewide advertising campaign, and we also have, in the process of sending letters, we call it a Dear Neighbor Letter, to any customer that's on a high-fire-risk circuit that could be impacted by PS/PS, again, reminding them about the program, giving them some safety tips, some places to go to find out about safety tips, and updating their customer information. So the public safety power shut-off. It's quite, I mean, it's a process where, and it's something, it's a really hard decision for the company to make. We're a company that, for 130-something years, we pride ourselves on keeping the power on. For us to make the decision, we're going to turn the power off on purpose, you know, is a really tough one to make, because we realize that it's, it's not an inconvenience, it's a disruption, and we realize that and understand that. That's why the decisions are really tough to make, but the end of the game, we feel it's something that's worth doing. And it's quite simple, where we will turn the power off on a power line, under certain conditions, to minimize the chance of a fire starting. It's used during elevated fire conditions, and our definition is different than, so we don't wait just for a red flag warning, because, you know, red flag warnings, the science behind them is not necessarily consistent between county and county, so we've made the decision based on this modeling, on what we're going to call an elevated fire condition. And it's primarily, well, in this area, obviously, completely, on the distribution circuits that bring the power to the residents, but on, you know, on the mainland, in the more populated areas, it could also impact customers that are not in a high-fire-risk area, because the transmission line that brings power to the local area does go through a high-fire-risk area. We think the chances of that happening are pretty slim, but it's a potential. So the public safety power shut-off, there's three buckets of information we use when we make the decision to de-energize. The first one is the science, or the geeky stuff I talked about, all the, what are the weather conditions, what are the fuel conditions, what is the humidity, what's the fire potential index? That's one bucket of information, and that's a very important piece of the information that we use. That's what sort of sets off our whole process. But the other two pieces of information that are used are equally as important. The second one is, whenever we get into a condition where we're thinking about doing a public safety power shut-off, our goal is to send a qualified worker out to give us the observations, what's going on on the ground? What are they seeing? Okay, you know, our weather station is saying it's, it's this windy, they've got their handheld weather gauges, so they can help verify that. But more importantly, what are they seeing? Are they seeing potentially lines slapped together? Or are they seeing vegetation flying through the air? So that fact, all that information is reported real-time into our Emergency Operations Center, which I'll talk about in a minute, that we open up when we get into a fire, when we get into the situation. And, you know, that's very important information, and it's done by the folks. Oh, I need help here. Anyway, I can do without it, but you've got the copy here. What button I push here? There we go. Thank you. So, and those are by our local folks on the island, and if needed be, we would supplement that with additional crews from the mainland to help patrol those lines. The third piece of information, again, which is very important, is, we're going, during the process, you know, leading up to it, certain, about three days out, we're going to be engaging with our first responders and our emergency planners, see what else is going on. Is there an existing fire that's going on that the fire department asks us to keep the, the power on, to keep power to a water pump, as well as, you know, is there, is there a key hospital or something that may be impacted? Now, that doesn't mean that the fire chief has veto power over our, over us, our decision to do a public safety power shut-off, but I can assure you, I've been in our Emergency Operations Center many times when we were going through this process, and it is something that we do consider. So the timeline, and I want to stress as many times as I can, this is the ideal timeline, right? But we make these decisions based on the weather. And the weather doesn't always, we all know, the weather doesn't always cooperate as well as our sophisticated weather models predict they are. So our process is about four to seven days out. Our meteorologists are observing something, and they'll say, you know, boy, the weather in LA County, this particular section of LA County, we're starting to see potential for high winds and the elevated fire conditions. This is really our get-ready-to-get-ready stage, so we're not making, we're not calling anybody, we're not staffing it up yet, but we're, this is our getting-ready-to, again, getting-ready-to-get-ready stage. We're making sure that the folks that are assigned are available, and that we're starting to identify crews and that type of work. So three days out, and this is, and this is not necessarily three days before the power's going to be shut off, but it's three days before the weather conditions that could cause us the power shut-off happen. So what we do then is, we activate an incident management team, and that's a company about, probably about eight years ago, went over to the incident command structure, which is a tool that all fire departments and emergency operations centers use. And the advantage of that is, we've all got a common knowledge, a common understanding, and when we're talking to each other, we can talk in common terms. This is also when we begin our first phase of our notification process, and the three days ahead, our notification process is to local governments, to our public safety partners, which include water companies, communication companies, hospitals. We want to give them as much advance notice as we can, because we know, as soon as we start calling residents, we know where they're going to call first, it's probably going to be City Hall, so we want to give you as much lead as you can, as well as giving the emergency first responders time to start their plans. Two days out is when we begin notifying customers, all the general population of customers. But we do that in the order, again, the first group of customers that get called are our local government and the public safety partners. The next group of customers that gets called, and this is very important, are what we call our critical care customers. So those are customers that are on some type of a life-saving device. And this is a process in place right now. I mean, if a car hit a pole and power was going to be off for an extended period of time, we call those customers, and if we don't receive affirmative contact that they got the message, we'll send somebody out to knock on their door to make sure they know that power is going to, in the case of a car hitting a pole, the power's off, maybe off for an extended period of time, that they need to take their actions, to plan for that. The difference here is, we're doing that process now 48 hours ahead of time of when this may happen. And it's something, you know, we monitor, it's one of the, you know, we monitor very closely how many customers are, critical care customers are on these areas that were, circuit that we're going to be potentially de-energizing. We work very carefully, closely with our folks to make sure we make contact with all of them. Then we begin calling the rest, all the general customers, and again, this is why it's really important that you go to sce.com/psps, to make sure we've got your latest contact information, because if you're like a lot of people, and you signed up for your Edison account 15 years ago, you had this thing called a landline, you got rid of it, you rely on your cellphone for everything now, but you haven't told Edison, hey, I don't have that landline I have, I now have a cellphone. have, I now have a cellphone. So we need, you know, we want to know your, your information, because we want to be able to email you, text you, call you about, not just a public safety power shut off, but any type of a, a public safety power shut off. And one thing, we're, we're in the process of, of rolling out, which I know is very important in a community like this, is a, a system, and we're, we're getting close, but not quite there, where tourists or, or people coming in for rental can go onto our website and receive, register to receive notifications, it's by zip code, which, for here, it's easy, uh, to receive notifications, even though they are not the, the property owner of the house or apartment that they're staying at or hotel. So that's a process we'll, we'll be rolling out pretty soon, and obviously we'll work closely with the city and the visitors, visitors group in town to help publicize that. So we then, uh, one day ahead, we begin that whole process again on doing the notifications, and then we do the same notification, if, 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 we're starting to implement, and again, since a lot of these decisions are de-energized or made real time, we can't always do it. But if we can say, okay, things are getting really bad, we try and do an imminent warning, one to four hours out, um, it, but it all depends on the conditions that we're observing, and if we're able to do that or not. We then call customers when the power is off. And when I do my community meetings, I always get public, puzzled looks, like, why are you calling me to tell you the power's off? Well, we want you to know the power's off, so that way you're not calling our call center. And, um, so, you know, we know, we want to tell you the power's off, so you're not calling our call center. Depending on how long the outage goes, we'll do updates during, during that period, if it goes more than 24 hours, 24 hours or more, we'll do an update during that process. And then when we restore power, we'll call you. But one of the things I want to point out is before we restore the power, we have to go out and inspect the line. So just because the wind stopped blowing or the weather conditions have improved, doesn't mean we can automatically hit the button in our control center and turn on the, the power. We need to go out and inspect it, because we want to make sure in that eight hours or 12 hours that the power was off, that there wasn't damage to the lines, that the line didn't, there's not damage to the equipment that when we re-energize could start a fire. But then, when then we then call the customers again, because this time, if we call you and say the power's on, but the power's not on to your house, then we want you to call our call center, because there could be a problem with just the local feed that powers your house. So the last thing I want to remind people is, you know, one of the things we, we do is encourage people to have emergency preparedness plans. Public safety power shut off is just one of many types of emergencies that can happen. So there's, this last slide, it has some good resources, and if you go to our website, has some, some really good resources. Uh-oh. And unfortunately, when you do this on a computer like this, the, the websites get blanked out. Uh, but we'll work with the city to get you a, a copy of this that you could, that you could post, that, this doesn't happen for some reason, I think if it's an internet-connected website at, or computer that the websites block off. But there's some really good information there on, how to update your account information. Also encourage people to sign on for Edison's Twitter account, that's one of the ways we share information about public safety power shut offs. So with that, I think we're available to take any questions.
Does the council or community have any questions at this time?
No, that was very thorough.
Thank you. I, I do, I do wanna mention that if there are any questions with regards to power on PSPS, or if there's like billing questions, or water leak questions, whatever, for folks to call the 800-367-8851 number. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask us? Are we, are we any more? Adeline, before you sit down? I didn't know if you guys were done, or if anybody else had questions. Could, Adeline, could you please pass along, and, and I think city staff has already asked, but it would be great if Edison could also come and do an update on water for us, and grants, and where we are on construction projects for our water system?
So I can, I can share with you that we, I was, I just found out actually, just a few hours ago, that DWR had indicated that they're planning to make an announcement at the end of this month, so the week of October the 28th. And just, we will come before the council whenever there's anything that we need to share with the council in regards to water, with updates, issues in regards to grants and things of that sort. So we, we have made that commitment.
Okay, so, so nothing has really changed or happened, or no upgrades, or any plans have been done in the last eight or nine months?
Nothing new to share with the council, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're gonna move right into housing? Okay, that's Miss Elizabeth.
All right. So, we tried to get together a few weeks ago, we ran out of time, so I'm back to sort of run through housing. It's a presentation you guys have seen a few times, and then we've got some additional information about, uh, new legislation, some things the governor has signed in the past week. So I'm gonna go kinda fast, there's a lot to cover, but holler if you want me to slow down, or if you have any questions, and then, and we can talk towards the end. All right, so we are here talking housing. So your housing is run through your housing authority. You all created that, it's created by statute, you activated it a number of years ago. Your job as a housing authority is to provide safe, sanitary residential dwelling accommodations for lower income residents. So that's the primary job of the housing authority. You use yours to address sort of all of your housing needs. Can you hear that?
And Yafet, can you turn me, try to turn this up a tad? I know my voice is big, but...
Yeah, he's nodding.
Yep. Is that better? Okay, there we go. So when redevelopment was dissolved in 2012, this is where you transferred your housing assets, was to your housing authority. So your housing authority assets at this point are listed here. You have a little over $4.3 million in bond proceeds. You have some lower, low and moderate income housing asset funds, so these are the ones that came directly from the redevelopment agency. The total is just under $6 million, but the bulk of that is in property value. So you have the street, the properties that are listed here, most of them already have affordable housing happening on them. And then there's the 206 East Whitley, which I think you have a presentation on later this evening, sort of your update on that. You had directed staff, gosh, maybe eight or nine months ago, to start working towards rehabilitating that, so you're gonna get an update on that. We have a little bit of cash, $300,000 or so in cash, and then you have some receivables, some loans that are outstanding that'll get repaid over time.
By, by whom?
Uh, well, part of it is your CRF loans, that was the, back before redevelopment was dissolved, the two years or so, three years beforehand, the state came in and took some of your money, and one of the ways you could pay that, that debt to the state was you could borrow from your low and moderate income housing fund through a CRF loan. So you're repaying yourself, that part, and then the down payment assistance program loans, people who you helped acquire homes.
Okay.
So when they sell their properties, you'll get repaid out of the equity.
Not to barge in, but just to clarify, the CRF gets repaid through the ROPS process. So that's where we get the payment from the county, is how we end up paying ourselves back for that.
Okay.
Right, it's coming through what used to be your tax increment. So if you don't get repaid here, then it would flow through as part of the waterfall, so you would get a percentage of it, but you get repaid on the ROPS. So one of the questions that had been asked that we addressed is what can you use your bond funds, or what are your bond funds? So like I said, you've got around $4.3 million in taxable revenue bonds, so they can be used for any qualifying redevelopment project, subject to the restrictions in your bond covenants. You don't really have a lot of restrictions left in your bond covenants, because they've been, they're taxable bonds, so any redevelopment project, housing project, appropriate public improvement, unless there are specific limitations. So if you came to us with a specific project, we would go back and check the bond covenants to make sure that it was appropriate, but you could just sort of, when you think about how you're gonna use these monies, is any affordable housing project would qualify. You want to, prior to spending the funds, you have to alert the successor agency, which is conveniently yourself. And there's a process that we have to follow, but they're at your disposal to use. Besides your bond funds, which are limited by the bond covenants, the rest of this money and the housing assets, housing asset fund monies, are limited by SB 341. So redevelopment gets dissolved, you settle up with the state, you have a certain amount of money and things that gets transferred to your housing authority as the housing successor agency. Two years later, or a year and a half later, legislature adopts SB 341, and that focuses what you can use those monies on. So the loans that you're getting repaid and the $300,000 in cash, those are focused here, and those can be used to monitor and preserve long-term affordability covenants. So if we have covenants that are on existing properties and they're about to expire, we can purchase, you know, make a deal with the property owner to extend the length that those properties would remain affordable.
And give me some examples of what we have here that's like that.
Bird Park.
Tremont?
Tremont? Tremont's the one I know of.
Okay.
You may have others, but Tremont, if their affordability covenants are gonna expire, we could go to them and say, hey, we'll give you $100,000, can you extend those for some period of time? And that's a negotiation, the property owner doesn't have to agree with you to allow you to do that. The other thing that you can use these funds for is homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, so emergency shelters, transitional housing, there's a pocket of money in here for that. And then development of housing, affordable housing, that's the main one. Now you have a limited amount of time to use your real property. Now for us, most, like I said, most of that property is already being put towards affordable housing purposes, so really the only one I'm aware of that's at risk is the 206 East Whitley, and we're working towards that. You had five years from 2012 to start using it for affordable housing purposes, so that was 2017. In 2017, we adopt, adopted a resolution that allowed us an additional five years. So we have out till 2022-ish to use it.
So I can, do you want us to save questions to the end?
Yeah, hop in anytime.
Okay, so on that, so let's say we decided, oh, we really didn't want to keep East Whitley, and we wanted to sell it.
Okay.
We could do that.
So you have two choices. You can sell it, just on the open market, to anybody who wants to buy it and not use it for affordable housing.
Right.
But you have to take the money and put it into your affordable housing fund.
Okay.
Or you can sell it or ground lease it to an affordable housing provider.
Okay.
And use, and have it used for affordable housing that way. If that affordable housing provider paid you something for the property, which doesn't usually happen in an affordable housing deal. Then any funds that came in would again, get put back into our affordable housing fund.
Okay.
But those would be the two choices.
Could we, could we condo them out and sell them as, for condos, kind of low, like, assistance condo buying for families?
Like the down payment assistance?
Exactly. Yeah. Could they get a, yes, could we do something like that?
Sure, we could turn it into a for-sale project, there, I mean, we'd have to go through the planning process and map it and stuff, but yes, you could turn it into a for-sale project and sell it to a low-income family, and then we'd probably have to supplement with some of our down payment assistance funds to make it actually affordable. But yes, that would be an appropriate use.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, real quick, if you wanted to use some of the money for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, you can expend a maximum of $250,000 a year out of this money on that. And you can only do that under certain circumstances, both of which you have qualified for, so if that was something you wanted to do, you could. The next thing is development of housing, and so you can develop affordable housing that is affordable to and occupied by households earning 80% or less of area median income. And I know we've talked about it before, do you, I could go back over AMI and, and all of that if you need, but I think everybody's familiar with it. So basically, this money and your assets are directed towards low income, is, is the goal of this, these funds. At least 30% of your remaining funds must be spent for the development of rental housing, affordable to and occupied by households earning extremely low income, so that's 30% or less of AMI. These are people who are near homeless, very hard to, to house, because of, it just doesn't make sense financially for developers. Those are really, really hard price points to meet. No more than 20% of the remaining funds can be spent on housing for people between 60 and 80% of AMI. And then, no more than 50% of the funds are available for development of housing between 31% and 50% of AMI. I'm sorry, 59% of AMI. So you're, you can use it for very low, low, and extremely low.
How, Elizabeth, how long, let's say we did a development project, how long does the deed restriction stay on the property for it to be low?
Generally 55 years.
55 years?
Yeah. Only a, so, one thing that communities like to do a lot of is senior housing, affordable housing, people are on fixed incomes, and so it's a, it's a population that needs service. These funds can only be spent on a senior project if in the past 10 years, less than 50% of the units that the city has developed were not restricted to senior citizens. We have not developed any affordable units, to my knowledge, in the last 10 years that were restricted to seniors, so you could do some senior housing if you chose to. So the assets that we transferred from the redevelopment agency to the housing authority are the properties listed here, and you can see like 238 and 311, those have a 55-year covenant on them, so they're not in any jeopardy of the 10 years that we had to use our property during that timeframe or anything. Those ones are all taken care of, same with 309 and 311 Beacon. The one that we're working on now is East Whitley. So all of our properties are currently being used appropriately. One of the things that you all had asked that we addressed when I came back here was sort of what are your housing options, what can you do with that $4 million or so, and then the loans and stuff that you've got coming in. And this is a chart that I think you've seen at least once before, whoops, sorry, guys, on your housing options. So you can, the, the, these are sort of the primary ways that housing money gets spent throughout the state. You put money towards new construction, multi-family rental, that sort of gets you your highest return on investment. It's a, something you looked at with, when you had your E&amp;A with CNC. That was the, the theory behind that project that we were looking to pursue, was either new construction or the next one, which is rehabilitation of multifamily, so you can house the most number of people for the smallest contribution. Another option which you have also done is the rental assistance program. You can do single-family projects where you either build or acquire single-family homes, and then the low and moderate income down payment assistance program. So those are sort of the main ways that money is spent. For you guys, your recent efforts in the past few years, we had a down payment assistance program between 2010 and 2015, you funded seven home acquisitions, and those funds will be repaid to the authority at the sale of the property or 30 years from when they were purchased. You also did the E&amp;A with CNC, which I mentioned, that expired in the end of 2018, and during that process CNC did sort of a market analysis, they reviewed all of the available sites at the time on the island to look for opportunities to either do new or rehab construction for an affordable housing project. They did your needs assessment, and they identified that we had 369 households that were living at or below 60% of AMI, and you had 459 households at the time that were between 60 and 120% of AMI. And then, my understanding is they also put a placeholder project on the water allocation list.
And when was that? I'm sorry.
Back in 2018.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know the status of that, the placeholder on the water allocation list. I'm sure something that could be checked into, but they did make that effort in case we were able to identify a site. There's East Whitley property.
That's a nice photo, by the way.
I know, I like that one. I don't know who took it, somebody here at the city, I think. Somebody here at the city, I think. And there are currently five units. Back in February, like I said, you directed staff to start working on renovation, and you're going to get an update on that in the near future. So where does that leave us? For purposes of your current status, you have your bond funding available. That can be used for affordable housing purposes consistent with your bond covenants, which would be basically low and moderate housing projects. You have your cash on hand and your loans that are going to be repaid. That's restricted by SB 341, so that's the one that limits you to putting a certain percent towards very low, a certain percent towards extremely low, and then low. And your primary options are new construction. And here you'll see there's a note, you can commit 3.5 to roughly $6 million. That's basically your cash on hand plus your anticipated receivables. Based on CNC's analysis last year, they estimated that they could do 40 to 50 units if a site could be located, combining that with other statewide funding, which is roughly $100,000 to $150,000 per unit.
Wait, with some, some other money on top of that?
Right, so that would involve tax allocation financing, the bond financing, maybe some home funds, maybe some county contribution. They were looking at a fairly deep stack of different financings, but they thought, you know, that's a very typical financing mechanism to have a stack like that to pull off any affordable housing project. But based on sites are available and things that, that their research, they indicated they thought 40 to 50 units was feasible. If you were to, we also asked them, so these numbers are based on the work CNC did, obviously. They, we asked them to look at rehabbing, and they gave us an estimate that if you were to just buy units, you would anticipate $100,000 to rehab a unit to get it up to, to code and for affordable housing purposes. Your other option would be rental assistance or down payment assistance programs. And then at some point, there was a question about whether or not you could just buy single-family homes, and that's certainly something you could do if there are homes available on the market and rent them out for affordable housing purposes. So that's an overview of where you guys are. I don't know if you want to ask any questions and talk about that, or if you want me to do...
Well, do you have questions at this?
A legislative update.
Before the legisla-
What's your preference?
Well, I just have, what happened to the word moderate income? I don't see any moderate here anymore.
So your bond funds are low and moderate, so that 4.3 can be used on low and moderate. Your low and moderate income housing asset funds, so the money that's the 1.5 or so that you have on hand in cash and loans receivable, those are governed by SB 341, and those are not eligible for, for moderate income. Those are low-income funds at this point.
Okay, because you never said the word moderate today.
Bond funds, sorry about that, low and moderate.
Oh, because on the little, on that one little goodie, one little goodie.
spreadsheet.
Yeah, up there further, huh? When you were talking about...
So if you look up here, you've got your bond funds at 4.4.
Right.
So those are, those are the ones that can be used for low and moderate, roughly 4.3 to 4.4 million.
Because you were talking low and very low.
That's your, those are the ones that are SB 341 restricted.
Okay, okay.
So those are a little bit more restricted funds.
Okay, but so we, oh, here, it's this one over here.
The bulk of your money is the bond funds, and those are available for low and moderate income projects.
Okay, because this, this sheet right here, this one, Development of Housing, didn't have anything about moderate on it, so that's where I was confused.
Ah.
Okay. All righty.
Yeah, so if you look on the summary page, the first one talks about your bond proceeds, and in there it says low and moderate. That's probably the easiest page for you to see it all summarized on.
Okay. Next time, number the pages, it makes it easier for me.
You got it.
Okay, keep going. Oh, I see, I see. Issued for low and moderate.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Questions? Comments? All right. Want to talk a little legislation?
Sure.
So the governor and the legislature were busy this year. I believe that there were, depending on how you classify some of the bills, somewhere around 16 to 18 bills that impacted housing production. I am not going to go through them all, I'm going to give you the highlights. BB&amp;K has put out over the past few days and will be over the next few days, putting out some legal alerts that you all should be receiving that goes through each one and gives you some more information on it. So you have particular questions, you can check those, or you can always give me a call if you have a question about something in particular. These are the main bills. The first one, AB 101, was a budget trailer bill, and this one does many things, but mostly it's just where the new funding sources are. So this has $650 million roughly in it for affordable housing purposes. There are specifically programs for homeless housing assistance and prevention programs. There is also some infill, infill infrastructure grant programs which can be used to support housing. There are local government planning and support grants, which I think your staff is actually already working to take advantage of. We've been talking about some grant applications that they're going to file to try and get some of that money. There's $125 million available to assist cities, local jurisdictions, in planning activities to meet your arena need, your upcoming housing needs. There's also a $500 million increase for the Low and Moderate Income Tax Credit Program, so there'll be additional funds available through the TCAC bonds to fund more affordable housing projects. And there is an additional $500 million to self-help financing fund to finance low and moderate income housing. So there's a fair amount of money out there that wasn't there last year, but that's the bulk of what's in AB 101, are the funding sources. Then you get to the ADU bills. So accessory dwelling units, we came out and talked about that, I don't know, a year ago now, maybe. And you've got an ADU ordinance that we've worked on, it's been to your planning commission, just in time for six or seven new bills on it, so we'll be making some revisions. It is never-ending, and I wish I could tell you that it was going to stop, but I just don't see it. So there are a number of bills out there, two of them, the first two, AB 881 and SB 13. These require the city to permit ADUs in more locations and with more limited review. It has new rules on setbacks, the things you can consider when citing ADUs. It is designed to streamline the process and to limit cities' abilities to regulate ADUs. AB 671 requires cities to include a plan in your housing element, your new housing element cycle, to incentivize the development of ADUs. It also requires HCD to create a list of grants and fundings for people who are looking at ADUs.
Does a community, do you know what ADUs are?
Accessory dwelling.
Okay, I didn't know if the people out there knew, so, thank you.
AB 587 now allows ADUs to be sold separately from the primary residence.
How do you do that?
It's a really great question. Law doesn't talk about that part, it just says that we have to allow it. So you would have to...
Make illegal lots?
Depends on the size of the lot, but we would have to look at it. You can't require more than a four-foot setback any longer for all ADUs. You can't limit the stories, I think it's got a four-story limit, so you could actually create a fairly decent-sized unit, and it would now be individually saleable. AB 670 invalidates homeowners association provisions, or CCNRs, that prohibit ADUs. So there were a lot of cities that were allowing ADUs, right? We were all complying with the law and adopting our ADU ordinances, and then people would go to build their ADU, and their HOA would come in and sue them. And so you can't do that, it violates the homeowners association rules. And so that has been addressed by the legislature. And then the last one, AB 1673, allow, actually it's not an EDU bill, it's a density bonus bill, and it creates additional incentives to authorize more bonuses, for lack of a better way of describing it. Again, all designed towards increasing housing production is the theory. The next bill, SB 330, known as the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, this makes numerous changes to three bills, oh, well, two existing laws, and then creates the Housing Crisis Act. One is the Permit Streamlining Act. It shortens the timeframe where, that cities have to review and approve projects that are affordable housing projects, or actually any housing project, depending on whether it's affordable or not. It takes, you now have 90 days instead of 120 days after an EIR is approved, and if it's an affordable housing project meeting certain criteria, that's down to 60 days to approve the project. It also limits the ordinance and the policies that a city can apply to a housing project. So if a project comes into us, first it requires you to create a list, a checklist that identifies what it takes to have an acceptable application, and then, once someone meets that list, it limits what you can apply. So you cannot change an ordinance and have it apply to a project that has been deemed complete by that list. You also can't change your list after an application has been submitted to add more things. If you return a project to the applicant, you can't ask for anything that is not on this list that you now have to create. If you don't create your own list, you get to use HCD's list. So we'll be working with your staff to create your own list, make sure it's complete. They've also, this doesn't apply to just affordable housing, it is all housing development. I included for you the definition of housing development, and that is all residential projects. So it's not just affordable, it's all residential projects. It is also mixed-use projects where two-thirds of the square footage is housing-related. And then all transitional and supportive housing projects. Get the shortened timeframes and the limited ordinance review. If, for example, you have fees that are adopted by ordinance that would apply to a project, if a project comes in and is deemed to complete by this checklist, you can increase the fees. You can increase them for the next project that comes along, but once somebody's got in and satisfied this checklist requirement, those are the ground rules under which they'll be playing. This is just a little information on the preliminary application process that I, the checklist I was just describing. We won't go through all of this, it's a lot of detail, mostly for your staff, but that you can take a look at if you want. But basically, like I said, the idea is you've got this checklist, you've got to create it, or you use HCDs, and that's going to govern how, govern how all of your projects, residential projects are processed.
If we could just kind of, all these combined, if you remember, all the work we had to do with sidewalk bending and marijuana, the state is imposing all these new requirements on cities, and they're mandating us to adopt our codes and change the rules and stuff like that. So this is probably the biggest effort this year has been on housing. And so you will see a lot of ordinances and policies coming before the planning commission and you in the next couple of months as we try and comply with all this.
Yep. One other thing to note, under SB 330, once a housing project is deemed complete under this application process, you get five hearings, no more, to approve it. Planning commission, design review, landscape, whatever committee or commission a city may have, you only get five hearings, so you need to be judicious. One of the things that developers complain drives up the cost of housing is the delays in getting through the city process and having to come back for multiple hearings, so the legislature addressed that by capping it at five hearings.
I don't think that's ever the situation here, right? Because we do everything under one roof.
It would only be if we, you know, maybe you continued on and on and on, continued, you know, a hearing for a single application. Or if you wanted to create a design review board, then you're up to three possible.
Right, right.
Or if a planning commission had questions, they continued it, it had to come back there once or twice, then it came to you, you had questions, it had to come back for some reason, five times, and you've hit your limit.
What about appeals? Do they count?
I don't believe so, but I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and check. The other interesting thing in SB 330 is if you have a general plan designation that allows housing and your zoning code has not been updated, you cannot require the project applicant to rezone or do a specific plan, they just get to fly in under the general plan. And you can only apply the objective standards that are in your general plan to that project. So one of the things that we'll be working with you guys on as you do your housing element update is the objective standards criteria, and, and sort of how you apply that to projects. AB 1482 was also new law, and this is a rent control measure. So this does two things. Landlords can't increase rents by more than 5%, plus the percentage change equal to the cost of living, or 10%, whichever is lower, over a 12-month period. And then the other thing, and there are some exemptions, the other thing it does is that it adds tenant protections. One of the things that happens when a, when a apartment or a unit is rent-controlled is the landlord will evict someone and then bring someone in new, because every time there's a change in tenant, they can increase the rent. And the rules in most rent control ordinances don't apply. This requires you to have just cause for evicting a tenant, so to prohibit that from happening. The rent control protections don't apply to housing that's constructed within the past 15 years, housing that is currently affordable housing, so it's deed restricted, that is a single-family home or a condo rented by the owner unless they are a real estate investment trust or a corporation of some kind.
So there's so many of our units here that they own their own home, and then they have another one they use for rental, and they're going to, they don't follow in, under this rent control at all.
If it's a single-family home or a condo, probably not. If it's owned in the name, so if it was in the name of Annie Marshall.
Right.
Then it would not apply. But if it was in the name of your trust, or your, if you had some friends that you invested with to buy that second house.
Right.
And it was, you know, Fund Women of Avalon's Trust or LLC, those, that would be governed. But if it's just owned by an individual, it likely won't be governed.
Wow.
By the rent cap.
That's a lot of exemption.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, people will buy a second property as an investment and rent that second property out, so it's, I mean, that's part of the problem is here, it doesn't really...
Right.
Yep.
This doesn't really help.
The other thing that was in the law, and I've got something about, so for those people who might be in this situation, because this, this comes into effect in January, that, like, right now, somebody goes, oh my God, I own Clarissa Court, so I'm going to jack up all the rents right now, it goes back to March of 2019.
Yes.
So, so they need to be aware of that, because if people start to do that and nobody's aware of the law, then that's a little...
So if I'm your tenant and you raise my rent in June, because that's when you normally do it, you can't go back and do it again now before December 31st to try and get a little bump and then try and do it again once the law goes into effect. That won't work.
Yeah.
The other one that I included here, just mostly for information's sake, is SB 5. So this was the new redevelopment, the governor vetoed it. So we all thought this one had a good shot, but Governor Newsom was not a fan. He vetoed it. It likely, it may resurface next year. This is, I think it's third attempt. It's been vetoed by Brown, it's now in one form or another vetoed here, so it keeps coming back, but not with success yet.
Elizabeth, can I just go back to AB 1482 real quick?
Sure.
So how would a tenant know? How would a tenant know whether or not they're, the place that they're renting is in a trust or in a person's name? Do they have the right to ask that?
Well, the property records are public, so it could be found out. And then it's likely whoever you rent it from, right? So your rental contract is with the individual or whoever is the owner of record, the manager... or whoever is the owner of record, the management company, something. So that would be the first place to look, is just who your rental contract's with.
And some of the, you know, some contracts date back here, date back 10, 15, 20 years before, maybe before things were even transferred into trusts or whatnot.
Right.
I think the, part of the reason I'm asking you this is that with our rental inspection program, there have been landlords that have said that they will absolutely raise the rent of their tenants if they have to do improvements to their home in order to meet the criteria of the rental of the program. So I'm just asking, does this help any of those persons who are concerned?
It may, and it's certainly something that you could look at, that the tenant could look at, to see if this provides them any protection.
Okay.
I think the difficulty will be the tenant may rent from one address, and they're not going to know how many other properties that person owns. And so maybe part of the, we can look at when we're doing the rental inspection program with the council, once that is, to be able to create some kind of a master list of all the landlords so we can help with this implementing, the enforcement of this.
Right. Maybe look at the property records to see, so we have on record who actually owns the unit.
And a lot of these folks don't even have, don't have leases. You know, they're all on month, so many people are on month-to-month, but...
Okay. Hang on, sorry.
Questions from the audience, or questions from council, or comments? And what was our RENA number supposed to be? Where did we hear Michael? Go ahead. The Regional Housing Needs Assessment in the state is telling us how many units we need of affordable housing.
Right, the SCAG is still trying to figure out what the actual number is, so they're coming up with different methodologies. So it's anywhere between 165 for us to 409.
Okay. Well, wonderful.
Yeah. The good thing is we only have to, like, zone for it and make it possible. We don't actually have to create the unit.
That's exactly what I, yeah, exactly. Okay. Thank you very much, and I think Mr. Green would like to add something.
Still under the housing authority, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so this is item number 11 on the agenda.
Wait, wait, where are we? You're still talking about housing stuff?
Yeah, this is, there's a housing authority item for the Whitley property. Do we have any questions for Elizabeth on her presentation before we go to this next item?
Oh, no, sorry.
I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you, and you're going to make your vote?
It's a pleasure to see you all.
Okay.
Correct, we're taking this out of order, City Manager?
Yes.
Yes, that's what we say.
But I say no, no.
Okay.
No, keep going.
Okay, wait, nine, 10, 11?
Yeah.
So Agenda Item 11. So this is back in front of you, back previously, July 16th, 2019 meeting. The City Council acting as a housing authority approved the final construction plans for Phase 1 of the project. And that's going to renovate four units within the main structure there. So the main building you see in that slide on the monitor there, we're going to rehabilitate those. And then we asked, and then realized also that one on the right, that lower right-hand corner there, was the one that we said that was beyond rehabilitation, that we wanted to demo that one. So then that leaves a sizable piece of property there. And so within Phase 1, we said, on the low visitor season here, so in between October and December, we're going to be bidding that. You already approved us to go out and get proposals for that, and we'd be bidding that work, and then we'd start construction in January to proceed during that low visitor center season and to finish up with that project by the time that we get to the high visitor season. And then at that point, you'd have four units available for low mod. But we said Phase 2, looking at that sizable piece of property and talking with Amanda Cook, that we had the potential of putting five additional units. So replacing that one and constructing another four units, that could yield nine units on this site. So that's what we're proposing to look at. And we had put in the budget $25,000 for some preliminary engineering and a feasibility study. And so that's included in our 1920 budget. And so we're thinking that if you want to move forward with this as one of the options for low mod, to make this site nine units, at least you could answer the question that it would be feasible and what it would look like, and we could at least have a good discussion with the public of what it would look like if we had an architect do a site plan, and then we did a pro forma on it and see what the cost would be and see if it would pencil out for us. Right now, we can't answer those questions. So that's what we're having in front of you, is to put a little more work into it with the architect. And we have an architect onboard with our on-call consultant ESG that could get this done pretty quickly, and that could answer the question whether you have the potential here and it pencils out for the five additional units, or, you know, you turn the corner and do something different with the property. So we just want to give you that ability to take a look as one of your options as we're moving through the potential sites. Because that's really what you have in front of you right now.
Okay, and so I've got a, and I don't know if we wanted to take a couple of minutes so that Bob and Amanda could read this. I don't know if you got the text from Greg Freeman? I don't know if he sent it to you. So when there was discussion about his property for sale, can I talk about that?
As long as we don't discuss what was discussed in closed session.
Okay, well, one of the, okay, well, he was told that four units couldn't be put on a 2,200-square-foot lot, correct, Amanda? And what he's saying here, then how can the city put eight or nine units?
Please try again.
Okay, thank you very much. Did I say Alexa? She's saying, "How can I help?" Beyond help.
Amanda sounds like Alexa, that's why I got confused.
So, so he's saying if he couldn't put four units on 2,200 square feet, how can we put eight or nine units on a 6,612-square-foot lot?
One second.
Is the gist of it?
These are high-density residential, how large is that lot?
Well, based on your maps, it's 6,612 square, 6,612 square feet. Based on a person, 612.
6,612. It'll accommodate six units plus whatever density bonus or accessory dwelling units you want to add to it.
Six units, okay.
The total lot.
Okay, so not eight or nine?
With density bonus or accessory dwelling units.
Okay, all right, that's a good question.
Right. In years past, when our density bonus was 50%, if you go up to 50% density bonus, that would get you nine units on this lot.
Okay. That includes parking, and...
Just number of units.
But you have to have other amenities on that property, like parking and a place for children to play.
Sure, there's floor to lot ratio, there's all those.
So that would reduce, could reduce the number of units.
It could reduce the size of the units.
It'll reduce the numbers.
Well, yeah. Yeah, if we...
I mean, studios versus...
Studio, well, studio and one bedrooms, and then that makes that... And that is zoned for high-density, is that considered high-density?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That was the main question. That was the main question, thank you.
And I would anticipate, looking at the parking underneath the building, okay? So there's potential parking space underneath the site, which is common on Whitley, you know? So I would think, you know, right now, we have a grade that goes down, so we're halfway there on that site. You know, as you walk down the site, you're actually dropping three or four feet down to the site from the roadway, so... And then if we put, you know, some type of podium setup where we have the parking underneath, which, you look at on Whitley, there's a lot of units that have...
I understand that.
Just like that, okay? But that, more to come on that. Really, it's to see if this is feasible, or turn the corner and move on to another project. You know, I just, at this point, it's just an unanswered question.
Right. Well, okay, I have a question. You have a beautiful rendering in your office of four units, right? The four additional units that could have been placed on that site, done some time ago?
Correct. It's the original concept drawings that Mr. Beaumont had when he owned the property.
Can we start with, I mean, and that, those seem to fit the facility. I mean, so when we talk about conceptual, he just drew the outside, or is that saying there's four units there, and what were those units?
I do not have floor plans for those, Mayor. It was just a number of units.
Four units could be in there.
Another four units, correct?
Four units, yeah.
With the idea that the existing U-shaped building had four, that rendering that you're speaking of pretty much took that U shape and flipped it. So you had a center courtyard, and the building was around the perimeter.
Okay. I see what you're saying, I believe. And there was, but there was nothing about parking or open space?
One of the renderings showed parking in the lower left-hand of the lot, like underneath the, one of the buildings.
Okay. And then I guess I have another question. Is that really what we want to do? I mean, do we, I mean, with the four units that are there, if we could turn those into condos and make it so that people have housing, number one? Do we want to really impact that area so strongly? I think that East Whitley Street is just a horrendous road. And I'm just wondering, is this really what we still want to do? I mean, I don't know if anybody had any other options for the property or thinking of it, but I'm just throwing it out there before we spend another...
That could be another alternative, Mayor. If you want us to look at that alternative besides the five units, that could be in the feasibility study.
Well, we didn't put that in the bid, so we're going to have to...
I sort of feel like we, this property has been sitting out there. It's a very rare and unique property that the city does own, and I believe that we need housing. And the city owns a property, there's an opportunity to create housing on this property. I mean, housing is impacted, space is impacted, everything is impacted everywhere in town. And so I kind of, you know, maybe like it or not, I mean, we, we... People are moving to smaller and smaller type of housing. We don't have these big, you know, 200, 300, or 3,000-square-foot homes in Avalon. It's, you know, smaller housing.
I totally get it, I just, you know, it's kind of like you say, here we go spending another $25,000 or $30,000 every time we turn around. And I know we can, and we can take it out of our capital program, but I don't know if that's what you...
Out of the housing program, which has the money.
Right, right.
It's the general fund that I constantly am making comments about. It's the unbudgeted expenses in the general fund. It is not a fund that has money such as the housing fund. But, you know...
But look at how many preliminary designs it took just to get the remodel on those, on those four units. You brought that to us at least four times, three times.
Yeah, the reason, the reason I brought that three times is I wanted community input, I wanted council's input, I wanted to make sure that we were right on the money, that we had the right fit for the type of improvements. You know, we were going to go from a very low-quality improvement, just putting some paint on it, versus, hey, let's make this thing, you know, something that somebody could be in and that we wouldn't have high maintenance on it, and it also would be higher quality, you know?
But I remember you started with the, we kind of said something, you started with this whole thing, and we dwindled down instead of starting where I think we wanted to start. You started the little, little higher thing, and I'm just saying, so we get a $25,000 drawing, which will include open space and parking ideas, and then it comes to us, and they say, "Well, nah, so now what's it cost?" It's because we're going to have to do it again. So it's, we do it again, and we do it again. And I don't think the $25,000 is going to, that's just a preliminary design.
So what that, what that's attempting to do is to lay out a site, lay out some renderings of the elevation of what it would look like on the property, and then also put some feasibility, some numbers to it. And I'm not, it's not the whole $25,000. Right now, I'm asking for $15,000, and I think that that's on the higher end of what I've discussed with our architect. So for that, you're going to get an answer whether it's feasible on this property to do this, or we turn the corner and not consider it anymore.
Well, we already know that four units are feasible, don't we? Kind of by, by Mr. Beaumont's design years ago? So we know four units are feasible under his design alone, correct, Amanda? Or no? Or that's just a pretty picture, and it had no, it had no relevance to anything?
Analysis.
Whether it would have been legal or illegal? Okay, but, I mean, it looked pretty doggone good.
But also, I just want to clarify, you're asked, we budgeted $25,000, so we've already agreed to do this through the budget process. Second to that, we budgeted $25,000, but you're actually saying by using, by using ESG, we can do this for a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000?
That's correct, and quickly.
And quickly.
Because we're ready to go, and we already know our architect, he's already been on the site, he's already rolling. If we just say, "Hey, you want to see it?", you're going to see this pretty quickly in front of you. And then as we're building Phase 1, you say, "Okay, do we want to go forward with Phase 2?" And you actually can roll, you know, maybe quickly into that, you know? And then we start making some progress on our low-mod housing.
And the architect knows through our feedback what we want. So he's not going to come through with Jacuzzi tubs and big balconies and all the good kind of stuff like we cut out the last one. So I mean, it's...
I got a better sense of what you wanted. So that's what that first iteration was, and now I understood, you know, with the architect, what you want me to bring in front of you. And I think that that will, we're bringing that now, we're delivering that.
Okay, so we're going to assume there are children there, so there will be a play area?
Yes.
And I don't know if we have the ability to regulate the number of parking spots and how we're going to do that.
But do we require housing developments? I, I'm just asking the question, so don't shoot the messenger here, but are we required to create play spaces and all of that too? Because we have all, all of the city parks that we're building, and...
Oh, we have to, in our souls, we have to. Whether we don't, you have to, you've got these kids living, they'll be living on East Whitley with no place to play.
So like in Phase 1, we did create the decks, so there was a bigger space outside now that they're able to go outside their, the housing unit. There is some lawn area. In creating the second unit, you know, the second four units, just like the accessory dwelling unit, it just is under construction right now, there's rooftop space, and there's space where you can have additional space up on the roof.
Where children can play.
Well, where families could be, okay? Not just children, but your children could play maybe on the deck, you know, while you're there watching, and you have one parent home.
And we would be removing, or would, do you think in the design it would be removing all of that Catalina tile in that fountain?
Well, I think that we repurpose that Catalina tile, whether it's on that site or whether it's on another site. But I believe that we can save that tile. I've had contractors...
I remember...
People want that tile, but, you know...
Look what we went through before, just in talking to the island company about repurposing that tile from, on Sumner, to put it on the other side of the street, and to pretty much keep it in its entirety. So, I don't know. And maybe that could be a little kid's swimming pool thing, or a little wet pad, or... I don't know if, to me, if it can stay in the, in the confines of that project, I would like to see it stay there, personally. There would, nothing would fit if you don't leave that there, well?
Except the building would just take up.
No, well...
Relocate it, maybe.
And ask the island company what it takes to relocate some Catalina tile? A lot of money. A lot of money, so, anyway. So anyway, that's just kind of my two cents, but, so go ahead.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to move forward in developing a preliminary site plan and feasibility study for the development of five units through the replacement of one unit and the additional four new units at 206 East Whitley for a not-to-exceed amount of $15,000.
Second.
Comments from the community? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
And so again, though, Bob, when you talk about that and putting that together, when they do this preliminary, they are going to be talking about the ADUs in there... they do this preliminary, they are going to be talking about the ADUs in there and trying to make everything fit? I mean, should we give guidance to say we want one of them to be at least a, do we tell you we want studios? Do we tell you we want one, couple two bedrooms? What do we say? Or we just wait till it comes back and see how much could be crammed in there?
I think we'll bring you a few alternatives. I mean, remember, we're, this is preliminary work, so we're gonna bring you some alternatives. It's gonna be an iterative process. You're gonna be fully involved in saying what you want to see there.
I know, I just, if there's anything we could say early on-
I mean, we can build two units that are three bedrooms. We could build four units that are one bedroom, or five units that are studios. We could, you know?
Well, I know. And so, are they gonna give us six drawings with all of those kinds of options? I don't think so.
No.
So that's my question. Do we want to, you know, do we want to say that some of them are gonna be senior housing so that we, they know that they're gonna, I don't know if anymore, we have to make everything ADA accessible just at the beginning, so that it's done, and then when somebody ages in place, we don't have to go back? Those kinds of questions as well?
Okay. I can, I can do a check-in with you as we get the initial layout done, and see if we're on the right track, okay? Just like we did the last-
I know, but that was-
And that didn't cost us any more money. That was like, here it is, here's, you know, a thirty percent plan. Are we on the right track? That's why I take a lot of steps in the project, so that the community can have input, and so can you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We didn't close community comments yet, right?
This, just for this item.
Just for this item?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Constance. Did I have to give my address? I don't know.
Go ahead.
Just commenting about this project. Personally, I know from looking for housing and things that it's mostly families that are looking for housing, mostly families that have children that need more than one bedroom, two, three bedrooms is what is needed. Just as someone who works with kids and families and things, and see them come through a lot, I know that there's a lot of families right now that are crammed into small units, that they shouldn't be needing to have all these children in. So that's just one thing to keep in mind, is you're building this, is, that's mostly what's needed here, is larger family units, not necessarily the smaller units. Also, with the Catalina Island tile, I'm completely on board with keeping that where it is. That is what makes Avalon Avalon. That's something unique here. It's not something we should just displace. It's not something you found other places. So that's something that's unique to this area and this island only. So I think that whatever we can do to preserve that is important. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Constance. Okay. Okay. Here we go to announcements. We're back on track, I believe, now? Announcements and written communications?
I haven't done this evening.
We want to welcome you back, and glad you had a nice vacation. You had a well-deserved one. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, three items. Mole Phase One, work continues on Mole Phase One. The contractor's making good progress. They're starting to form, and that's good news, because we've basically been deconstructing the structure at this point, and now we're constructing it. So we're making progress on that. Pebley Beach Road lift station, the subcontractor Jamison Engineering is on the island now. That's really good news, because we're getting prep work done this week to shut down and bypass the lift station next week. And then that's when we get into the true guts of the lift station and make all these repairs. And we're anticipating by mid-November that the mechanical portions of that lift station will be fully functional, and we'll just be down to the civil improvements with the concrete, the road repairs, the retaining moles at the slope. All those things are what gets done after the mechanical pieces are fully functioning and tested. Two road crossings will be installed on a temporary basis at Pebley Beach Village, and then also at Wrigley Road. And what those look like are metal ramps that are twelve feet wide, and, but they allow the flow to be pumped through them. So they're a specialty item that the contractor rented from the mainland that allows traffic to pass in case we need to pump that flow directly up fifteen hundred feet of pipe. So we have a redundant system, so that if we need to use that during the shutdown. The parking modifications are underway on Beacon Catalina and Descanso, so you see that we painted gray on the curb at the top half of Beacon, and we're starting to work on that at Catalina now, on that one side over there next to Vaughan's. And then there'll be also the green two-hour rollout of Descanso going in, and then the no-overnight parking signs going on the other side. So there'll be a soft rollout of that and a training period, just like we did on the other parking. So there'll be a period of time when we're getting all those improvements installed, then code enforcement's educating the public that it's changed, and before the enforcement, and really the ninety-day trial period starts at that point, once that soft rollout's done. So, and there's communication with the public, you know, with the islanders, been published. We're gonna also give further information to the Descanso and to the Catalina residents by letter of all the improvements that are happening. And permits are ready to be issued for their resident parking permits also at this point. So any questions on that?
No.
Could, go ahead, first.
Where are the rails for the sidewalk cuts?
It's still, they're on our list, and I know that we're behind on that. So, yes, they need to be done soon.
This year, maybe?
Yes, this year. Before this year is up.
And I was just gonna ask if you guys could put a couple copies of the parking information up in the arcade and one up at the bank bulletin board?
Great idea.
If they still have the bank bulletin board. I have, I do know a couple people who didn't know that that was gonna happen, and maybe just not necessarily see the paper on a regular basis, or, you know. So it's just one more avenue to share the info.
And is it on Channel Three?
Do we still have a Channel Three?
I believe we were reaching out to Channel Three. We had previously asked the, by email, through the islander, to place it in the previous one, but it didn't get placed until the eleventh. We were gonna roll it out for two weeks. And as Bob Greenlaw stated, that once we start enforcing, we always give a week or two just reminders to people on the streets. And I do want to remind people on Catalina and Descanso that, you know, we'll do our best to patrol those in the wee hours like they do all the other streets, that, you know, some days that street might get missed, or it's gonna be after the certain hours. And also that there are two types of on-street parking, just like on our stickers that are on our golf carts. It's the full-time residents, and the residents that don't reside here full-time, even though they're homeowners, they still have to be off the streets at night. That's in our municipal code, and that is always, that was put in there to protect our full-time residents that live and reside here full-time, whether you're a tenant or whether you're a homeowner.
Great. Thank you for that reminder. Okay.
Captain John Hawking, LA County Sheriff's Department. I just want to remind everybody on Thursday is the Great Shakeout. It's ten seventeen, October seventeenth, at ten seventeen. And basically what that is, that it's an imaginary earthquake that happens in Southern California. And what you need to do is just check and make sure you have water, food, first aid kits, all the things that you would need in case we did have a large earthquake. And the sheriff's department will be working with the other first responders on the island and with the Red Cross on that day.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John, I've noticed a couple of little kids riding electric bikes in town without helmets.
Okay, we will focus on that. You have to wear a helmet unless you're over eighteen.
This person was definitely under eighteen.
Gotcha.
And there's a couple of motorized bicycles in town that have no mufflers. They sound horrendous.
And that's also a violation of the California Vehicle Code.
And there's a couple scooters in the same boat, so if you guys could watch out for that.
Is there any certain area that people have seen the kids riding, or is it just all over?
Beacon and Sumner.
Beacon and Sumner?
Yeah.
Basically.
Everybody's Beacon and Sumner.
Everybody's Beacon and Sumner.
At some point during-
Yes, we will focus our attention on that.
But I would say, you know, the, on the way to school hours is a good time, too.
Gotcha. Sure will. Thank you very much.
Matt Baker, Finance Director. Last Friday, I published the visitor-driven revenue report for the month of August. I just wanted to share some highlights from that report. August TOT revenues were up nine percent. We had a new hotel come online that month, so hopefully we can see that turn into a trend. Cross-channel passenger count for August was up for the month, and that was the first month from a passenger count basis we've been up for 2019. So that's positive news. And lastly, mooring fees for the month of August were up almost eleven percent. Other than that, finance has been wrapping up its MTA audit and focusing on its financials, and business as usual as far as AP, payroll, and all that good stuff we do. So, unless there's any questions.
When are those other audit people coming to town?
For the ad-tax audit? Or for the, for the ad-tax audit? That hasn't been determined. We've provided them with the information that businesses provide to us, so the gross receipt information, the receipt number information, and the dollar amounts. And they're using that to base their selection. I can give you an update next council meeting with more precise dates, but right now they're doing their analysis to determine which businesses they would like to select for further review.
And I'm just gonna ask one-
They will be reaching out to you as well.
Thank you.
They've been all the finance.
Okay. But, and I'm gonna be gone for a week, so just make sure it's not that week that I'm gonna be gone. I'll let Denise know when it is. Thanks.
Not a problem.
Any questions of the Finance Director? No?
Good evening, Council. Harbor side of the deal today starts the pay-for-two-get-five-free. So there's a lot of happy campers out there in the harbor. And we've been getting a lot of phone calls about people coming over and wanting to store their boats here. So we're fighting that front now, so. But, you know, we're moving forward. Some you would think would be over, but it's not. Weekends have been crazy and great, so unless you have anything to ask, I'll sit down.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And unless we have questions of Amanda or anybody else, we're good? Okay. And City Manager, anything to report?
I do have a few things to report. As of this afternoon, I've received fourteen public comments regarding cruise ships and some other items, and that we are compiling all the concerns, and we are, we will presenting that at a future council meeting. And I just wanted to, I guess this is good news, I wanted to clarify that, as previously stated, the October twenty-fourth deadline for a measure to be placed on the March third ballot is December sixth. It's the same date that coincides with the candidate's nomination paper deadline, and all our resolutions that have to go to the county as far as consolidating with them, and so any measure. So that's good news. It gives us more time. Then, I think I already said this at our last meeting, but candidates can start pulling their papers on Tuesday, November twelfth, and you have until Friday, December sixth, the date that I just stated, at five PM. And today, staff on the State Water Resources Board website, we had to refill and answer all these questions, required our year five, Phase Two, small MS four, which is our stormwater permit. So that was finalized today.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask two questions?
Yes, please.
Can you just reiterate, because I was taking notes? Tuesday, November twelfth, is the day that people can start pulling papers, and everything is due back by Friday, December sixth.
At five PM.
So that's only, is that normally, is it a three-week period?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I guess so. Okay.
So it's always been later because of our election being in April.
Oh, right. Okay.
This is just later.
So then, my, I was gonna ask a question, and I think I answered it, because we had said at the last council meeting to direct all comments to you regarding the cruise ship, right? Okay, so I've only personally received five comments, so I don't know if, and a couple of them I forwarded because you weren't on the email. So I just want to make sure that we're all for, if somebody sees an email and doesn't see Denise's name on it, because I didn't realize we'd gotten that many comments, which is good.
I will be compiling the list and then sending them off to you electronically, and they'd be available to the public also. And I did want to say to the public that if you had sent me one and I didn't respond, I did respond to one, and that was to Paula Patterson when I was in Iceland. So I planned today to get to them all, but I didn't. So they will be hearing from me, each one specifically, just to thank them for their comments, and that's how we're gonna move forward.
Great. Okay. City Attorney?
Yeah, just one thing. I was at a conference a week and a half ago for the Independent Cities Association, and the big item there was on the census, and they're telling, the basic message was, is that all the cities in California are competing with each other and with other cities to get your census count as high as possible. And so they had some great, specific items on how to do that. And then the next couple days at the League of California Cities Conference, I know some of you were going, there were some sessions on census. And so it's really important to go to these, because all the cities are out there trying to up their count so they can get dollars, because the more people you have, the more dollars you get. And it's kind of like a cage fight with all the cities. And so we want to do our best to get as high a count as possible.
We're really gonna have to inflate ours to compete.
Every little bit counts, though, because it really, your grant money is tied to how many people you have.
I know.
So if I could just, that was one of my talking points for my council member report, because there was a big discussion, the Rose, from the Rose Institute, at the Gateway Cities Board meeting on October second. And the importance of getting the good numbers is that it helps us to get our CDBG money, which is a Community Development Block Grant funding. And it comes from the census basis, and it can be up to two thousand dollars per resident for funding for our community if we get our numbers into, to a good state. The also, the other major report is that the citizen question was officially killed, and it will not be on the census. So we, we need to, as a community, get that word out to as many possible people as we can, because that's, that was the key in census prior, of not having a good set of numbers from part of our community that just didn't, didn't feel comfortable, and so now it's gone. And then also, there were talked about whether or not we have a complete count committee, and I'm not sure who from the city is leading our census efforts.
It's Amanda and Flannery.
Amanda, okay, awesome. I just wanted to participate as much as I could, and also if we've got our, a community group already formed, or, and also for the actual census.
Did somebody see Melinda Sessions is working with the census people on the mainland or something? Yeah. No, I discovered a few people that would be great working for the census, like those people that work for UPS, that know where everybody lives, and the cable guy, he knows where everybody's hooked up. So he's been up and down all those stairs, and they're familiar faces, so if they could work on a part-time basis, that would be helpful.
I just want to see if it's, it's city-driven, right? The census would be city-driven? So I just was hoping that we would be, oversaturate the information over the next three months to four months to the community, so that people want to talk to us just to make us go away.
And a majority of the census this year is gonna be done online, and so there's no, the people will be walking around, but if you do it online, April first is the big day. So it'll be easy to do, and what some cities are doing is setting up something in City Hall where people can come in and just do it in City Hall, this dedicated computer. So, and all these cities are talking about this, and I just got the feeling, being at this conference, that it's just, it's just competition among each other. Because what they said is it's the two thousand dollars for the CDBG, but what they're looking at is it's three thousand four hundred dollars in total funding for each person that you're gonna get, either state or federal. So imagine three thousand four hundred bucks for each.
Man, woman, child.
Man, woman, child, so.
Did the library set something up to take those as well, with on the computers? Yeah, for the people.
But some people don't have computers, and some people don't know how to navigate well.
Amanda's already planning to do something here at City Hall and to have assistance also for the bilingual speaker.
That's great.
That was the whole focus of this conference. I mean, it kind of subsumed all the other items.
Yeah. Anything else to report, sir?
No, that's it.
Okay, council members. Well, you started, you want to continue?
I already started. I'll just finish mine pretty quick. Obviously, attended the Gateway Cog Board meeting on ten-two. I'll be attending the FCCA conference next week, and I want to take a moment to give a shout-out to Mr. Sean Brannick. I had the privilege of attending the parent assignment gathering for- I had the privilege of attending the parent assignment gathering for the Kids at Play Program last week, and he had the youth in his program write anti-bullying skits, and the kids wrote them and practiced them and performed them for the parents and members of the community who were there. Have you get choked up? It was pretty heartfelt and extremely difficult subject matter. Sorry.
That's okay.
Obviously. I really appreciated the work that the kids put into it, and also for Mr. Sean, who has nonstop talked about bullying and the effects of it, and the effects to humans who are on the receiving end. He's done a lot of work with this, with the kids this year, and I just was really excited to be a part of that, and I'm thankful that we have Mr. Sean and that he puts what he does into the youth for our community, so. Sorry.
That's good, yes. And along that line, I've asked him if he wanted to bring a skit or two up to one of the council meetings, because they're very short skits.
I can't even talk about it.
Yeah, they're, they're very short skits, that we would be happy to entertain him here at the council, so.
I, I think that the subject matter for these little gems in our community to have thought these scenarios of themselves, because it's what's happening in school, is what really hit me to the core, that it was very difficult, but heartwarming to watch at the same time.
Yes.
Hi. Tomorrow, I'm going to go to the League of California Cities Environmental Committee, meeting in Long Beach, and then I'm going to stay for the league conference for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I will try to get to as many of the census discussions as I can. I meant to ask a question, I'll ask you later. And I think that's about it, yeah.
And along that line with the league thing, though, I was going to be meeting with Michael Palmer at about 1:30 tomorrow, and so we could get the agenda and kind of look at the sessions so we can kind of divide and conquer.
Okay.
Okay?
One thirty, cool.
Excellent, excellent.
Steve, are you going?
I don't have anything tonight, no. I can't make it.
Um, just a reminder, Fall Fest is this Thursday from five to nine, I believe. We want to thank community services for the lovely decorations and the candy as well. And my husband, Billy Delbert, is playing bass in, with Mary from the Prairie, or Hot Off the Range, whichever name you want to call them. So anyway, so you root him on and make him smile. Thursday, the school, last Thursday, the school put on its first session of shortstop, and it's a deterrent program for young people that are drug, alcohol, just misbehaving, and other kinds of crimes, and to keep them under the juvenile justice system. There were, there were children there and their parents. I expressed the seriousness of what some of, what some of them have done. They give them a two-week homework assignment that they have to do with their parents, and last year, nobody did it, and there was no consequence. So I told these children that there will be consequences. One of the consequences will be if they don't do the homework, the parents will need to go into the classroom, stay in the classroom, and with their children for the day, at least one day. The parents were, some of them were already upset, they had to miss working that evening. So hopefully, it'll be taken a little more seriously this year. I also talked to Mr. Lunsberry about the kids doing some kind of community service for their consequence, and so he's being supportive of that, and then we're going to see what else, what other options we have for consequences for these young kids to maybe assist them along the way. And we realize they have many more problems that still need to be addressed, but some of the things they're doing, they, I think we can nip them in the bed pretty quickly. So that was good to see. And, not today, but I know Ollie brought it up a long time ago, not a long time ago, because I can remember it somewhat, the, about the vehicle noise. And you one day said, could we bring that back? And then some of the discussion was, it's a very expensive proposition to keep it open every day and have poor Jordan sitting there, whoever else. But I wanted to talk to, perhaps about an alternative program where we, we get a list of all the vehicles, electric vehicles don't make any noise, they wouldn't have to worry about those, and blah, 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 but then whatever vehicles, and then it'd almost be like a, your name has been selected to be tested, and, and bring them in on a certain day, so we're not having to be there all the time. Just, so I wonder if we could.
Put on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda, or talk it with staff a little bit, because I, we don't want to overburden them, but, but there's a lot of noise, nope, I don't think there's been one ticket issued for a noisy vehicle. So.
But there's also, I mean, it's probably the most unpopular thing that I could say right now, but I think we should talk about bringing smog check back, because it's not just golf carts that are an issue. We have a lot of the commercial vehicles that, you know, any of the main thoroughfares up Marilla, I mean, the buildings are just covered in.
I know. Part of those are, yeah. Well, and we had that discussion with Steve Hayes years ago, and he said to put in that system is extremely expensive, so it would never pay for itself. But we can ask a question again, and that was, I think that was before I was on the council even.
But it seems like.
Who you had that discussion with?
Smog check?
Steve Haas.
Haas.
But the, I mean, they have them in little garages all over town.
Over there, yeah.
I don't know.
But I don't know how many, they're, they're doing thousands, I mean, but I think it's worth looking into exactly. Yeah, good point.
Also, we could talk to AQMD, there might be some money out there.
Oh, okay. Did you get that one too, Ms. Denise?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool. Thanks. Okay. Okay, oral communication. This is when members of the public may address the city council at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes each. Please keep in mind that the deputy city clerk will be tracking the speaker's time. The first warning will be given within thirty, when thirty-six seconds remain, the second with nine seconds remaining before the time is up. Thank you. This is a public service announcement. Thank you for that, for me.
Did we get that for every agenda from now on?
You read it well.
Excellent.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm Jim Watson.
And Jamie Mila.
Looks like it's going to be a show.
Still only got three minutes. Trying to get sick, huh? We're both here on the behalf of the Lions Club. Jim, explain why we're here.
Yeah, we just wanted to add to Captain Hawking's report about the Great Shakeout is this Thursday, and we are representing both the Avalon Lions Club and the American Red Cross, and we just wanted to add that we are putting on three different events, including a class tomorrow from three p.m. to five p.m. at St. Catherine's. It's going to be topped by the Red Cross, and it is Shelter Fundamentals, Operating in a Disaster Shelter. On the actual day of the event, from ten-thirty a.m. until noonish, probably, we will be having a little shelter simulation with real-life cots and stuff like that, put on by the Lions and the Red Cross. And everybody's, you know, welcome to both classes, and especially anybody that's interested in becoming a Red Cross volunteer. Although the third thing we are doing is, there's going to be a ham radio net up at the hospital. A lot of people don't realize the hospital has its own ham radio setup, and it is to be used in case all communications are lost, cellphone, that kind of thing. The hospital will be able to maintain contact with mainland hospitals. So anyway, we've got a team of ham radio operators that will be doing that, Gabriel Saldana, Bernie Ramming, and so it's a good chance for people to come out and learn some things and get prepared. And Jamie has a little challenge, I think, here.
Well, yeah, just wanted to challenge our Lions Club members to come out and volunteer. I know it's easier said than done. We do have a few members, two of them are council members, actually, so. I know it's easier said than done, being in the middle of the day, it's my challenge personally as well, so it's, but whatever, if you can find a little time to come out and help out, it would be great. So any Lions Club members out there listening, you can, you can reach out to me, mostly if I have my contact information, otherwise, reach out to Jim, and we'll get you set up.
Great.
I was going to say one thing that we can all do, if you can't participate, is everybody get out their smartphone and set the alarm for ten-seventeen a.m. on Thursday. Wherever you are, when that alarm goes off, you're probably going to forget what it's about, and it's going to catch you by surprise, and that's a good thing. So wherever you are, you're out watering the roses, you are waiting in line at Vons, you're stuck in traffic on the 405, think about what you would do if that was really the eight-point-nine earthquake. What are you going to do when you go home and there's no electricity, and you got a fridge full of food? What are you going to do when you turn all the faucets on in your home and no drinking water comes out? Do you have bottled water at home, you know, canned food, that kind of thing? So, anyway, thank you.
That's great news. Thank you. I'm trying to figure out how to put my ass up, my line.
Thank goodness we can drink wine off the shelf. Oh, did I say that out loud?
Practical.
Good evening, Albert, all Avalon Library. Interestingly enough, the library also participated in that program. We will be doing a mock earthquake at ten-seventeen on Thursday as well. There'll probably only be one or two people in the little room anyway, but we do do it. It's very important, the Great Shakeout is, all libraries in the county participate in it, so shall we? I just wanted to restate, library is grand opening on November fourth at twelve noon. That's going to be the big ribbon cutting. It's going to be very exciting. We're going to have a great time. Lots of people from big county, lots of people from the city. I hope, I hope everybody comes. And I'm going to have at one-thirty that day, a performance by the Gypsy Folk Ensemble. They're going to do an afternoon of Mexican dancing and singing. Should be a lot of fun. And then at three-thirty after school that same day, I've got an appearance by the Haynes Marionettes. They're going to do a marionette program. I've been watching, if you've walked by the past couple of days, today, actually, we've started loading stuff into the building. We have a new golf cart. They've given me a library golf cart. It looks like a big green jelly bean. It has the library brand all over it. It's really cool. It's so cool. Also, and I don't know if you've noticed, they've brought in several mini libraries. I don't know if you saw that, too, because it's basically, she's one of the, our friends are one of the major forces behind this. Mini libraries that we're going to set up at a few locations around town. Free books, just take one, leave one. I'm not quite sure when we're actually going to have it physically set up, but we have the new cases. They're here, they look great. They're wrapped with library, you know, library branding. It looks magnificent. Coming up this week, we're still doing ukuleles on Mondays upstairs at the bank. Mondays at four for beginners, five o'clock if you know how to play the ukulele. I've got a storyteller coming on the twenty-fourth to do not-so-scary stories for Halloween. Chess on most Saturdays, oh, TV, chess on Tuesday, November, Tuesday next week, next Tuesday, Tuesday after. I'm going to, we're all getting a little punchy, so I'm going to say thank you very much. Come to your library, November fourth, grand opening. It's going to be amazing.
Yeah, you're used to getting in and out of here early, but we switched it around with those presentations.
My name is Judy Greer, three fifty-five Descanso Avenue, and for the last three years, I have been doing what Paul's been doing, but he's been doing it so much better. Having a full-time librarian has been a joy, and I do want to ask you all to come to the opening on November fourth. Switching hats here, I want to tell you a little bit about what's happening at the hospital. A couple of things that I heard that were kind of surprising to me, someone said they thought that Dr. Warren wasn't a real doctor. And I said, oh, no. She is a real doctor, please realize that she has different kind of designation, because she does other things too, including holistic medicine and more having to do with nutrition and body, physical things like that. They are doing a hormone replacement process starting next week, so that's supposed to help you with memory, which I'm signing up for. Anyway, so please, if anyone says that, that's not true. She's wonderful. The other is Santa Dominguez. I don't know how many of you know her, but just about everyone I know knows Santa, and she has finished all her licensing and is seeing patients at the hospital three days a week. So please sign up if you'd like to see Santa. We have two new doctors coming. Dr. McCrorty is a former Navy physician, which I think works very well for an island full of water like ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's it. We'll go to the consent calendar.
We have eight items this evening on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from the October first regular city council meeting. We have warrants for a total of $1,013,259.95, and that's for the period of September twenty-first through October fourth of 2019. The third one is to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor or city manager to execute and deliver the inter-fund loan agreement between the city's general fund and its sewer and saltwater fund, the enterprise funds. Number four is to authorize the city manager to contract with Rodney Greek Consulting to provide temporary government accounting services for an amount not to exceed $20,000. Five is to adopt an ordinance repealing and replacing Article One, Chapter Six of the Avalon Municipal Code as our public liability insurance. We had that first reading at the last council meeting. Number six is to authorize a sixty-day extension on the agreement made between Montrose Water and Sustainability Services Incorporated and the City of Avalon with no increase in the overall contract amount. And as the staff report stated, Michael Palmer has been working diligently trying to make a resolution with the insurance in it, so we're sorry that we have to keep bringing it back for an extension, but we really thought we could resolve it sooner, and we haven't, so he's been very diligent on that. Number seven is to award a contract to Michael Baker International for the analysis and updates to the city's sanitary sewer system overflow reduction plan, the sewer system management plan, the system evaluation and capacity assurance plan, and ten-year and twenty-year capital approval plan for not to exceed $161,875, and to authorize the city manager to execute a contract, authorize an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the sewer fund for the excess cost over the budgeted amount. And as you can tell, that item number three relates to item number seven and item eight in our consent calendar. Item eight is to award the contract to HDR Engineering Incorporated to provide a cost of service study for the City of Avalon's sewer, saltwater, and solid waste enterprise funds for an amount not to exceed $33,385, and to authorize the city manager to execute a contract, authorize an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the sewer fund for $18,685, and to the saltwater fund for $4,858.
Can I just ask general questions about all these inter-fund transfers and loans?
Absolutely.
How are they all going to get paid back, and when?
Mm-hmm. Where's Matthew or Michael?
So the proposal is over the course of five years, and if there's a savings that's realized, we could pay it back sooner if we had the available funds. But what we're proposing is, any of the funds that we borrow against, we would pay it back within a five-year schedule.
So, and so basically, well, because of the sewer, saltwater, and solid waste fees that are going to go up dramatically. Because we're already spending how much? A hundred and some thousand dollars just to get all this done, all these studies done? Hundred and thirty here?
The required studies of.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that's, what are, what are those totals together?
So what we're asking for on the inter-fund transfer is a not-to-exceed amount of $400,000. And the reason why it's a not-to-exceed amount of $400,000 is because the contract negotiations are still ongoing with Montrose Sustainability Water, who does our, the city's wastewater treatment plant. We're pretty confident that we've got the price locked in. There's just some negot, ongoing negotiations on insurance, and so we're trying to wrap that up as expeditiously as possible. So we didn't want to go in and make it for an amount and then come back should anything happen during those negotiations, and then bring this back to council again. So the actual price of the loan might actually be a lot lower, depending on where the final amount on the contract.
Mayor, if you would go to item three and the first page of the resolution, it breaks down, so like the first, whereas it has like item number seven, which is that $161,875. The second, whereas, is item six, and that's just, as Michael said, the educated guess for Montrose.
Right.
Which we think that they're going to increase the contract. And the third, whereas, is item eight, which is the rate analysis study.
Okay. Well, then, well, I want to pull item eight, but I don't know what you all are thinking about the others.
You pull eight. I'll make a motion to approve items number one through seven on consent calendar.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
I'll ask.
Okay, so in 2017, these folks did this study. Okay, so in 2017, these folks did this study. And now we're hiring the same engineering company to come back because whoops, we forgot something?
So I wouldn't characterize it as forgot something. How the main pieces of the sewer fees that exceeded budget weren't things that they necessarily would have been able to anticipate. One of the things we talked about during the revenue study sessions was the increase in the utility cost, namely the water at the wastewater treatment plant. Utilities, what they did when they came up with their study is they looked at the historical use rates at the wastewater treatment plant to come up with an estimate and project out over five years. They didn't anticipate the increase because they were looking at it from a historical perspective, and they weren't necessarily aware of the regulatory change that forced the treatment plant to change the way they do things. And so that one piece alone is $100,000 a year approximately in over five years. That adds up to $500,000 that otherwise would have been a part of the fund balance. Other pieces to it were we changed the way the Falconer's contract worked. So they were estimating it again on the existing contract with the Falconer. When we increased it, that increase wasn't anticipated in their analysis. Again, I wasn't here when the study was done, but my guess is they were looking at it and trying to come up with as conservative as a number as they could to mitigate any potential rate increase and also be able to defend it. You know, the one downside is that when there are unanticipated costs, they aren't necessarily going to be recouped in our fee structure, and that's why we had to go back. We did put it out to bid. They were the only people that responded to the bid. Their amount is slightly below what they charged us for the last time they came out. That was down from what they originally proposed. We have gone back and talked to them. And the number you see here is after further discussions.
So they have, so they have two years now of historical, additional historical data. They know about the Falconer, and they know whatever else they know. Why is it so difficult?
So one of the pieces, a large piece, and what I asked them to do is break it down by task. And of the $30,000, $7,000 of it is the cost of service analysis. And so what that piece is, or $6,000 of it, is where they look at how much a hotel room impacts our sewer system versus a single-family resident, and comes up with a way to equitably charge that out. I did approach them and said, since we had just done that two years ago, is that piece necessary to do as part of this study? The answer we got back is that we would have to then, as part of the rate study requirements, go back in three years and do a separate cost of service analysis three years from now. And so our thought was doing it all at once. And so in theory, we would be able to use this study for the next five years. So the cost of service piece, even though we did it two years ago, we'd have to update it every five years, whether we did it now or three years from now.
And Annie, since we are drawing from our general fund so much for these enterprise funds, in order for us to raise any of our fees, we have to be able to justify it legally that, I mean, they could come back and say no, but...
Well, we already have to justify increases based on $400,000 in studies.
I mean, it doesn't sound like rocket science. Electricity's up this amount of money. The Falconer's up this amount of money. The shortfall's up this amount of money. So we gotta recover $1 million over the next five years. A couple hundred thousand dollars a year split up between the two.
Well, Oli, I could agree with you, but our legal, people have been telling us you have to have a rate analysis study, or you have to have that back you up legally.
Well, we had one.
Two years ago, and these other factors weren't involved in it, so we can't justify it.
But there's now changes that we're aware of. Why can't we?
Couldn't you do amend, amend that based on what we know now? Put that on there and not have to do this study for three, three more years?
You still, you always have to do a study because you're gonna be raising fees. So the question is, if they were starting from scratch and hadn't had this background, would the price have been higher? I think the answer is, I understand it is yes. So they are taking the background information, but they have to do the study, the report, all over because you're raising fees.
You can't just say, this is what they were two years ago. These are the known facts we have now. That's the study we're doing that says we're paying a Falconer. That's $50,000. The rates have gone up so much. We anticipate the rates going up another whatever percent by Edison, throwing some number in there, which should be high, and they're saying that's the study.
Yes, and that's what they're going to do.
For $33,000. Could you want to put in an RFP for this proposal, for this?
Okay, but things are bound to change over time. So we do a study today. We've already increased our rates. Isn't that why you do it every five years, is to incorporate the things that have changed in the five years since the last study? I guess I'm still not clear. Why do we have to redo it when we just did it?
Because they missed a bunch of stuff they didn't know, like the Falconer, another $50,000.
Okay, but if they missed it, why are we having to pay for it again?
Because they can't anticipate the things that we might do out of the ordinary. You even forgot that we increased it $50,000. Remember? So, I mean, so they didn't even know, and that was last year. So they didn't have that number. But I think anybody, if you're doing this study, just like when Bob's gonna talk about the cost of building something, he knows if he does it 10 years down the line or five years down the line, there's gonna be this much, it's gonna cost this much more. So I guess it's a little frustrating.
And I understand that. I think for us, what we're trying to do is we recognize that there is currently a draw on fund balance for the enterprise, and right now, we're not recouping those costs. It's being subsidized by the general fund. When going back and looking at that, unfortunately, some of that information, as Matt said, was not captured. So in order to be a little bit more fiscally prudent, what we're trying to propose is go back, redo it. We're armed with a lot more information than we might have had last time. We could better account for that and better increase the accuracy of those estimations, knowing that they are still estimations. The other option that you have before you is we could not do that. We could wait to do this in three years. But we'll continue to draw on fund balance, and the general fund will continue to subsidize these funds because there's not, there's not sufficient funds in order to cover a lot of those costs.
Why do we have to jump through hoops when we know the cost is, the enterprise funds are costing us money? We can point at what the enterprise funds cost us. Why are we going through these hoops?
You still have to do, you have to prepare an engineer's report whenever you raise fees. So the issue is, you have to do the report. The issue is, is this the best price for the, for the report that you have to do when you're raising fees? And that's, that's...
So you're, what, correct, fill in the gaps for me. When we did these last rate increases, we basically were saying we weren't touching those for five years?
There was a five-year range?
There was a five-year range where it goes up automatically every year, which is under state law. You can do that.
Right.
And what we have subsequently learned is that we thought that would, or engineer estimated that that would be enough to cover our cost, and it's not. And so in order to raise those fees, you have to do an engineer's report. And this is what their, their bid is for doing that report.
I totally get it, and I totally understand what you're saying, Michael and Matt. I totally do.
So we did, didn't we not give them all the information?
No, things have changed since then.
Right.
Our water bill out at the wastewater treatment plant went sky-high, and it was because of regulatory requirements, correct, Michael? And that required us to use more water out there, and the bill was sky-high. And so that was one thing that was not going on because it didn't exist.
Why do we need engineers to look at a water bill?
Pardon me?
Why do we need an engineer to look at the water bill, saying we're not charging enough?
No, you're, we're telling you what wasn't included.
I know, I understand that. But subsequently, we've looked at the water bill, and we thought the water bill was a hundred bucks. Now the water bill's 200 bucks. So we gotta recover another hundred bucks.
I agree, Oli. I would love for it to be that simple. But when legal tells us that we have to do something, we're bringing it to you and telling you what's required of us.
But why is it an engineer is his question versus a finance, an audit guy or something like that?
Something that can't be done in-house.
The statute calls it an engineer's report. Doesn't necessarily need to be an engineer. The statute calls it an engineer's report.
These guys are smart. They can look like engineers.
But what are they really? What are they?
There are, there are people at their firm that have finance CPA backgrounds. Others have engineering backgrounds. They did provide the CVs in the proposal.
You have a CPA background?
Yeah, I do have CPA.
And we got an engineer right there.
You know, so you need a water bill. Where's that?
And I think where Scott's gonna come in, the challenge would be if someone were to question us raising the rates, we wouldn't have the backing of an up-to-date report to, to support whatever those calculated rate increases would be, which would potentially expose the city to, to legal risk. And so the reasoning why we would go with an outside firm is so we would have that expertise behind us when we do raise those rates.
And then we're saying, and we go to an outside source, and now we have to tell, we have to answer for the people why this is happening?
And part, part of their proposal does include them coming out here to do the education component, presenting to council and the public the, the study, and the findings of the study to justify any rate increase. And so there is a component of their bill, and I believe it's outlined in a separate task in their proposal of how much their proposal is related to them coming out here and presenting. And I believe right now, they're planning on two presentations publicly.
Okay, so then my question is, if we already have the rates lined up for the next five years, four or five years, and they come back and say we need to raise them, we can go back or we can renege on that previous deal?
Well, no, what it would be is the rates that you're already set, and then you would be replacing the remaining three years with five years going forward.
That's, okay.
And then we don't have to do the report again for five years after that. Because what's...
Unless they get it wrong again.
Well, right, but, I mean...
That wasn't funny.
I think it's important to call out that there's a mistake made somewhere, and now the city's having to pay another $33,000.
No, there's not a mistake.
There is not a mistake. So something was, or we've, we've changed the rates since then. But I still don't understand then why, if we've changed the rates since then, we're already in that five-year. From the time we did the study, we changed the rates.
So the, the prior study defends the current rates. If we were to change from the current rates, is why we would need the new report. And as far as, I don't want to assign blame, but I think it, it's not just as simple as something they didn't know. A lot of these costs, you know, they wouldn't be able to anticipate, and, you know, we necessarily wouldn't be able to anticipate, and that's why we're, we're having to...
As I understand, the largest increase was because the state and federal government, what they do, they change the rules. And now we've gotta produce, have more water going through the system to create safer and cleaner effluent. And because of that, the rates don't work, because of the regulations imposed by other governments.
I get it. I get it.
And I just want to remind you that prior to us adopting the five-year rates, we did it yearly. So we went through the whole process of notifying the public with the mailer. We justified. And for years, we always increased everything by the CPI, and that stopped maybe about 2009 when we did the recession. And then we didn't touch them for years, and then we increased a little, a little. And that five-year, and I don't have it in front of me, but we didn't touch the sewer or something for...
Solid waste didn't have any increase for the first two or three years. And I believe, I don't know what the increase was from the original to the first rate of the study, but I believe it was three years going forward from the, the first year's rate that was adopted. And how they came up with that three-year increase is they looked at the historical average increases in utilities or in labor. What they couldn't anticipate, and to pick solid waste out as an example, is we started allocating a portion of our code enforcement's time to green bag enforcement. And that happened after they had performed their analysis. And so when they looked at labor costs, they weren't considering that we would be charging some of code enforcement's time to the solid waste fund. So how we don't get in this situation going forward is we need to be mindful when making any changes to any of the enterprise funds that any added costs not being contemplated in the study aren't going to be recouped by revenue, unlike the general fund where we could have a good year and TOT could be up. The, the enterprise funds, we, relatively close dollar, we can figure out how much they're gonna bring in. And so when we do have any potential for unanticipated costs, we really need to evaluate, do we want to use fund balance to pay for those unanticipated costs? Or do we want to wait until the, the next cost of service study before looking to increase certain contracts or, or certain labor allocations?
But this does start the clock again, so we've got five years from this. And we have to do it. So I make a motion to approve number eight on the consent calendar.
We grudgingly second it.
Thirdly. You seconded, Oli?
Yeah.
And also, there was the cost of, when we put that building up, the sewer treatment plant, right? That ended up costing us more. We didn't know because we had to put the crane on it instead of, right? The things like that as well. You don't need to stand up, Bob, but that's another one. And that was a, that was a big-ticket item, to get that crane in there, to put that building in.
And that's really why we don't have the time to, to wait and try to wait out the five years. Because we do have expensive capital needs that, that need to be addressed. And I guess the other option would be deferring some of that maintenance, but then that can lead to more expenses down the road.
Yeah, we got that. Okay. Thank you very much for bearing with us on this one. Okay, call for the vote? Call for the vote?
I think we voted already.
I already did.
Three ayes.
Oh, I had, because I interrupted.
Three ayes, one no. Councilmember Cassidy.
On principle, I understand.
I just, I don't feel comfortable with it. I don't feel like I'm, I understand it, and I, I just, I don't agree with the contract at all. So I would just rather vote no than...
Okay, perfect. Okay, item number nine.
Okay, item number nine is our first item in general business. It's consideration of the resolutions placing advisory measures regarding the commercial cannabis businesses on the March 3rd, 2020 general municipal election ballot. At the last city council meeting, staff was directed to come back with it, with the wording for, so there will be two advisory measures on this. And the first advisory vote would state, should the City of Avalon expand its current commercial cannabis ordinance from medical delivery only to allow for adult-use recreational delivery sales within the City of Avalon limits? And that's a yes or no. The second advisory vote would be, should the City of Avalon expand its commercial, its current commercial cannabis ordinance to allow for a cannabis business storefront location or dispensary within the City of Avalon city limits? Yes or no? And then I also want it stated just that there, on the last page, sorry, of the resolution, there are some dates that I want to point out. So even though these are advisory, we treat them like a regular measure on a ballot. So there would be an impartial analysis by our legal counsel. Then there can be arguments for or against, and that deadline is Friday, December 13th at 5:00 p.m. And then rebuttals to those are, the deadline is Monday, December 23rd at noon, and those are stated in that resolution.
And all of those get put in the packet for them to read, and it's no cost to anybody for writing a rebuttal or a pro or con.
So if I, so I asked that question today from legal. If I receive, say, nine rebuttals, there is something in the elections code, the California elections code, code that gives me the priority of how, no. I wouldn't put all nine in there. I would have to systematically figure out, according to the elections code, which ones go first.
Okay.
And I don't have those rules in front of me right now.
And would it be advisable, let's say, if there's a few people in the audience that say they want to write rebuttals, might it be in their best interest to get their thoughts together?
Absolutely.
So that we don't have nine, we just have two or three concise ones that, that make the points and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only question is, are these the questions that you want asked? The first one is just basically saying, you know, are you, are you expanding it to...
It seems like a lot of words to me. Should the City of Avalon allow for a medical delivery service?
I already do.
I mean, in its current ordinance, okay, should the City of Avalon allow adult use, an adult-use recreational delivery service? Just that simple.
You could do that, I mean...
Doesn't it sound simpler?
Yeah.
Then they should expand its current commercial da-da-da-da, and within the city of Avalon city limits, seems like a lot, to me. Should the city of Avalon allow for an adult-use recreational delivery service?
One reason you expand it is you have an existing purveyor. If you change it to allow a new one, then you could go through the whole ring of the world of awarding the new one.
I don't think that says that either way. Expand its current, it doesn't say who, I don't think it really says who you're expanding it to.
Your ordinance-
Well, then we decide what we do.
Right, yeah, all this does is-
So, this is just, remember, this is non-binding.
Yeah, just advisory.
We bring an ordinance back to the council based upon the results of the election.
Okay, and then, should the city allow, of Avalon, allow for a cannabis business storefront or dispensary? Simple. Right? Should the city allow for a cannabis?
I'm fine with them. I think it's-
I think it's too wordy. I mean, if I have myself, within the city of Avalon city limits, I mean, that seems just, like, redundant, to me. And I think the simpler it is, the simpler it should be. That's, well, that's just me. So, whatever y'all think.
I'm fine with it, the way they are.
The way they are, the goals change.
No, she likes the way these are written. I just think they're too, way too wordy for the general public to read, but-
Well, to have this not go down into defeat, I won't agree with the way it's written.
Oh, yeah.
I can count.
I mean, it's a minor thing. It is a minor thing, but, but-
Right.
Okay, so, there's, is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt the following resolutions. Resolution calling for the placement of advisory message regarding commercial cannabis businesses in the city of Avalon on March 3, 2020, general municipal election, and a resolution requesting the county of Los Angeles to consolidate this election with the statewide primary election, also to be held on March 3, 2020. And three, a resolution, a resolution setting deadlines and rules for submissions of primary rebuttal arguments for and against the proposed advisory measures.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Would the community like to speak on this? Anybody have a comment for now? Hi, Rhonda.
I just want to say that I'm really glad that we have some time to inform our community about what we're about ready to step into, especially with the FDA and the Surgeon General coming forth with some of the hazards of vaping and T H C. But I really appreciate that we are giving the community members the, to be able to be informed. We will be hosting a certified drug instructor to, Kathy Morofo will be coming here to the island. We're now trying to schedule out a date for her, but we will keep that in the Islander. And we also will be putting some articles in the Islander, because I did hear from you last, or council meeting before, that that's what you wanted, is for the community to be informed. So, we are going to reach out and try to bring that into our community, so that we can be an informed community before this decision is, I mean, as they go to vote. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And I had, I had said to Rhonda that perhaps she could use the council chambers when this woman came to town, if you didn't have another place to have it, or whatever. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, and it's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, number 10.
Number 10. So, this is, this item's about authorizing the city staff to solicit bids for a citywide paving project. It's on general business, so that, just so I can make the community aware of how we get to the spot where we have lots of cuts in our roadway, and how we repair those. So, here's some info for the public here. As part of the 2016 capital improvement project, the city included a significant paving component in that last project. This included maintenance overlays, utility cut, patch paving. Since that time, three large developments have finished within the city. Utility repairs have continued to be, make cuts in the city roadways, and other roadway maintenance overlays are due at this time. These developments and utility trenches have temporarily been placed back in service with cold-mixed asphalt, concrete as a roadway surface. The reason for this is, there's no hot-mixed asphalt plant on the island, and a major mobilization is required to bring the equipment, materials, and personnel over to accomplish this final servicing. You know, on the day of paving, they actually bring a barge over with 10 trucks with hot-mix on it, and then they deck it. So, that's quite a bit of, very high-end, as far as dollars, to get it over here, but it also risky. There's, at one time, they actually brought the barge over a few years back, and they had to turn around midday to send that barge back, and they had to take that asphalt elsewhere. So, the roadways that are proposed with this hot-mix, large patch paving, with the three or four mentioned major developments include Crescent Avenue, next to the Trailhead, Pebbley Beach Road, next to the Trailhead, Beacon Avenue, Catalina Avenue, Sumner Avenue, that's right next to Vons, with all the cuts that were made to that, Chimes Tower Road, and Vito Avenue, which was part of the Zane Gray development. And so, those will all be part of the cost to those developments, to get those roadways back in shape. And the roadways with utility patch paving include Lower Terrace Road, Clarissa Avenue, Metropole, Whitney, Marilla, and Clemente, that's to name a few, but there's still some more around town that we'll add with that. The, our, the requests for bids will be structured to the minimum level of work identified as a basis of bid to award the contract, and that's to meet the legal requirements. And then, the balance of the work will be structured as bid alternatives, so the additional areas can be added to the limited available funds. And so, you know, I haven't noted the funding analysis with this agenda item, but as we come back with the, receiving the bids, I'll have that whole funding analysis with it, and our recommendations of what could be funded, and what could be built over a couple of mobilizations. It sounds like one of the paving contractors that usually does our work here is going to be doing other private work, so I think that there could be a couple of mobilizations over a period of a couple of months. So, that's a good opportunity for us to get a lot of work done, as well as the private developments. So, that's what's in front of you tonight, is to let that go out to bid.
How much money has been collected in the fund from these projects since the last time that we did the citywide repaving?
I don't have that exact number with all the different pieces now.
Matt just wrote it down.
Is that it?
Matt just wrote the question down.
Could you let us all know, when you-
Yeah, that would be with a funny analysis. You know, it's like, Zane Gray, they deposited 50,000, and I think that's going to be shy of what is the needs up there, but that just gives you kind of an order of magnitude of that one. S C E is responsible for $38 a square foot. So, anybody that's digging out the road, it's, our base rate is $38 a square foot, and that's just to have what the contractor charges during the 2016 capital improvement program. And that's where we got that square-footage rate to charge for excavation permit, so that we can just make the repairs. So, you see that it's expensive, okay?
Yeah.
But we collect along the way, okay?
So, it says the final certificate of occupancy for these developments will not be released until the paving or payments are complete.
That's correct.
Who are those? Who doesn't have their final certificate of occupancy?
They have temporary permits by Vons, Trailhead, and Zane Gray.
Okay.
The three large developments that have paving, utilities.
Okay. So, and like you said, it probably, because you said it's very expensive for the trucks to come over, but it looks as though maybe in two times you can get it all done?
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
When would you anticipate doing the work?
It sounds like the first mobilization would be early in November.
Oh, wow.
And so, then we'll get a batch of it done, and then it's going to regroup, and then get everything else ready to go, because some of the city forces will actually be excavating out some of the original cold mix, that we can save some money. So, it's public works. Instead of like, when we had our 2016 project, we had our general contractor doing the excavation, and the paving contractor followed them immediately and replaced. So, I think that we can actually make it where it's more cost-effective for us to go out and run our crew around right in front of them.
Better put a cola on your $38 a square foot.
Yes.
And not Coca-Cola?
No.
Okay.
Staff recommendation.
Second.
Comments? Call for the vote? And I just have one really quick question. In the Friday, in the update, they were talking about all the dirt that was coming out of Field of Dreams?
Yes.
Where's that?
That was the material processing that I asked for us to have a contract for 20,000, no, not to exceed 20,000, but that was going to come out of the retention for coalage, because we had a machine that actually was on the island company's Pebbley Beach Village project.
Okay.
And that was a grinder that grinds up concrete and asphalt. And that's what we needed to bring to the island, and so, we took that opportunity to do that. And that's a very valuable pile of aggregate out there, right now.
Oh, good.
That was at the last council meeting.
Yeah, and I'm just, I guess I was surprised and thinking, well, that was, that happened quickly, really quickly. Okay.
And the vote was all ayes, I'm sorry.
It was all ayes? Okay, thank you. And then, do we, we have a hospital board trustee meeting?
We do.
We do?
Like called, call ordered. The Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, October 15, at 7:42.
7:45.
7:42, 45, word. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Haves?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Chairman Olson?
Here. Announcements?
I have none, or written communications.
Oh, cool. Presentations, none. Oral communications. Members of the-
Here, read my new one.
We have a new one now. Members of the public may address the hospital board of trustees at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should remember their comments to three minutes each. Please keep in mind, the deputy city clerk will be tracking the speaker's time. Their first warning will give a 30 seconds remain, and the second will have nine seconds remaining before the time is up.
Very good.
Anybody want to speak? Not flocking to the podium. Consent calendar.
There are two items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is minutes from this September 3 Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. Number two is the C E O's September 2019 report, and the C F O's narrative analysis for August 2019.
Comments?
I wanted to ask a question, but I noticed that Jason left.
Jason's back there.
Oh, there you are. There you go.
Everybody get grilled.
No, no, no. I just have one question. Your contract with Tarzana Treatment Center, how is that differing from the pilot project they're doing in town now? What, or is it addition to, or what?
It's not differing in any way. What it is, is that they're, we have telemedicine capabilities that no one else has in the city, so they utilize our equipment whenever they need to provide services to patients.
So, this is the same thing, they just relocating into your location?
Only at certain times. I mean, we utilize a lot of our telemedicine, so whenever they need to use it, they just schedule when they need to use it.
Okay. So, they're still probably having their counseling sessions elsewhere with the clients one-on-one, but then when they need to use your telemedicine, that's where they go? Thank you.
Anymore?
You're off the hook.
You're good.
Make a motion to approve items number one and two on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Discussion from the public? Hearing none? The vote?
Thanks, Jason.
All ayes.
We are adjourned.
I think we have a-
We have closed session.
We're adjourned from the hospital.
Oh, sorry.
And this hasn't been long.
And for the hospital, we'll have a closed session on the Avalon Fuel Dock, with the parties listed here. We have no refusals on this.
Black or blue? Have to be blue.
Are you ready?
We ready?
And we're on. And we are back from closed session. Counsel?
No reportable action.
Okay. The meeting's adjourned. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.